That had me wearing this shirt. Someone's gonna notice. No, it is. My little baby yoga. Exactly. Okay.
We have, we have a lot of stuff.
I'd like to call to order the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board here on the Fourth of May at 5:00 with the Secretary, please call to roll.
Commissioner Bennie.
Present.
Commissioner Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Present.
Commissioner Elper.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Mens.
Present.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to announce that I'm going to appoint myself as well as Commissioner Mens to the Planning Committee meeting due to the fact that we're having a hearing about naming about bridal veil and we need to have all three at-large commissioners plus also the district commissioner available for that hearing. So I just want you to know. So it's Commissioner of the impacted area. I'll take an approval of the agenda. Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Okay. All right. Then the approval of the minutes of April 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries also. All right. Oh, I should have announced. I apologize. Anyway, unfortunately Superintendent Bangora is not able to be with us and I hope that he's well and holding him in the light. And so we are going to be having our superintendent report from our deputy superintendent, Ringel.
Thank you, President Forney. So I'll start with citywide recreation highlights. 1,000 or 1,140 people attended egg hunts and bunny events in iftar throughout Easter and Ravanon weekends in our parks. Highlights of some of these events are, number one, McCray hosted an excellent dog adventure day at the park with 50 dogs registered and over 100 people in attendance with their furry friends. Number two, Nacomas neighbors joined at the community center for the annual bunnies on bikes spring event. Families enjoyed decorating their bikes, making crafts, entertainment by a unicyclist, enjoying a bonfire and roasting marshmallows before hunting for treat bags hidden around the park. At Harrison Recreation Center, there was a spring egg hunt event for youth and families. There was a combined attendance of 165 youth and families participating in activities. At Luxton, celebrated the first ever iftar dinner. Over 60 people of different ages and backgrounds attended. At Farview, hosted an egg hunt with 100 people in attendance. Spring break fun for kids was held at Stewart Park where they did wood fire burn designs. And then there was full-service schools. At Bethune held a storytelling workshop done by Wilding for 15 students. Every kid got up to the mic on the last day for our six-week session. The theme was the Great Outdoors, which was designed around Minneapolis parks. Proud to say we held a youth job fair. The NPRB hosted a job fair over the weekend, this past weekend that is, with 200 people in attendance, 27 employers and over 130 youth. Sparked Studios Spring Break programs, free programs were offered at Powderhorn, Harrison, Luxton and Whittier Parks over spring break. More than 30 youth learned photography, editing, storytelling, TikTok, Instagram, YouTube sensations, youth beat makers and participated in esports video game tournaments. In athletics, the Minneapolis Umpire Association conducted numerous trainings for umpires in preparation for the start of the youth and adult softball and kickball leagues. Our adult softball and kickball leagues begin play this week or begin to play the week of April 24th. Nearly 300 teams and 5,000 participants are registered in the leagues across the city, which will run from April to July. At golf, league registration is at 100% of 2021 numbers and season pass sales are already approaching our 2021 numbers. Meadow Brook Golf Course is nearing completion. NPRB is hoping to take control of the building in about two weeks. Columbia's Back Nine is scheduled to open May 6th after 18 months of construction to reduce flooding. For aquatics, aquatics has hired about 60% of the lifeguards needed to guard all of the beaches and water parks for 2022. We are currently outreach, attending and hosting job fairs and recruiting for additional staff. This is a nationwide trend as there is a 40 to 50% nationwide lifeguard shortage. Ice arenas. Staff are working on fall 2022 and winter 2023 ice bookings. Northeast Ice Arena is hosting over 200 hours of indoor activity rentals this spring. And Parade Ice Garden is hosting the figure skating competition this week, May 6th to the 7th. Our Archives area has seen a significant increase in research requests over the past few months and have resumed onsite research visits for the public at the headquarters building. Environmental conditions in the archive storage area have been brought up to date in the accordance with the Archives Emergency Preparedness and Recovery Plan, which included the installation of fire extinguishers and monitoring of environmental conditions. Stories from the Archives for the employee newsletter last quarter included the history of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park for Black History Month, the photographs of women and girls playing basketball in recognition of Women's History Month, and the NCAA Women's Final Four Tournament taking place in Minneapolis. Finally, McCray Park celebrates its 75th birthday this year, so the Archives shared photos of its construction in the 1950s and updated recreation center and programming from the 1970s. Research into records retention best practices and the historic implementation of Elwell Law for report to the Racial Equity Action Plan continues as priorities in the coming months. Park Police. We received a very nice note from Mike Trullinger. He is the Battalion Chief and Public Information Officer for Hennepin Emergency Medical Services, wanting to extend his gratitude for the officer in our 830 squad, which is Officer George, on April 29th for his assistance with an elderly disabled person with a powered wheelchair scooter whose battery had died. Despite several attempts to line up a ride and tow to help the person, ultimately it was decided to be more expedient to just push the patient on his scooter home a few blocks to his senior high-rise where he could recharge the battery. This photo was taken of that incident and Mike says he's, this happened during extremely busy time of the day when all other resources were stretched thin, and yet it was simply the right thing to do, and appreciates our teamwork. Environmental stewardship. First up is in forestry. After just one month of planting trees, forestry crews have planted 6,500 new trees. This is more than half of the 9,200 trees that will be planted this year. One of the keys to increase productivity is to auger holes rather than hand dig them. While using an auger is faster than hand digging, the most important benefit is reduction in injuries to our arborists. Boat launches. This is exciting. So boat launches open for this season with AIS inspectors. The public boat launches at Bide Makaska, Lake Harriet and Lake Nacomas open for this season at 8:00 AM on Sunday, May 1st. Woo-hoo. Trained NPRB environmental education staff will perform aquatic invasive species inspections on all watercraft and water-related equipment that enters and exits the lakes through the boat launches from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days per week throughout the summer. Chains will be pulled across the boat ramps to prevent access at times when NPRB inspectors are not in sight. Staff perform more than 9,000 watercraft inspections in 2021 and expect the boat launches will be busy again this year. We had a fire at Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden. This happened last Wednesday. More than one wildflower was started in Southworth Park, leading authorities to believe it was arson. The fire in the wildflower garden was in a hard-to-reach wooded location and in the vicinity of a population of endangered and protected dwarf trout lilies. Staff did an incredible job managing the situation and ensuring the safety of visitors and the well-being of the garden's historic plant collection. No structures were impacted by the fires. We owe a big thank you to Wildflower Garden staff, Elise Jacobson, Maria Montero, Charlotte Cotteri and Susan Wilkins, Officer Lynette Yonkey, Crew Leader Armandondo Santiago Toledo, Plumbing Foreman Joe Murdock and the fabulous Minneapolis Police Firefighters on site that day. This was a great example of cross-collaboration, strong decision-making and fast action to protect parks. You will also see reference to this in the Ps and Cs. The 2021 Community Garden Racial Equity Evaluation is complete and is on the Community Garden webpage. Key takeaways from the 2021 evaluation were applicants and plot recipients were more diverse than in 2020 and more reflective of Minneapolis racial demographics. Goals included improving outreach strategies, mitigating barriers that prevent people from participating and creating gathering spaces within community gardens. The full report is available on www.miniapliseparks.org/communitygardens. And asset management. Maintenance and operations. April was a very busy time for operations staff. The beginning of spring marks the turning of the page as we close out our winter operations and transition from snow removal and ice rink maintenance to inspecting playground equipment, shelters and preparing courts and fields for a busy summer ahead. In many areas, tennis practices have already begun. In the weeks to come, any remaining ice rink materials are being organized and removed from rink locations for summer storage and the initial stages of turf and park infrastructure is being assessed for winter damage. Park Ops will be working closely with their crew leaders as well as the Trades Department to get repair projects scheduled and addressed. Additionally, many NPRB four-legged friends will be participating and will be appreciating a fresh coat of woodchips in their parks as well. Pictured in, let's make sure it's that one. Yeah, pictured here is Lake of the Isles Dog Park receiving woodchips earlier this week. Lastly, park maintenance staff are sweeping and cleaning up the residual salt and sand left behind from winter on our past trails and parking lots. Horticulture. The horticulture team wrapped up the dormant pruning season at the end of March. This past month, several large pruning projects happened around the city. One major project was rejuvenation pruning of several lilac stands along Minnehaha Parkway in South Minneapolis. While lilacs are usually pruned right after they finish blooming, when major health issues exist, a full rejuvenation pruning is best performed in the winter months while plants are dormant. Many of the established lilac stands throughout the city have not been regularly pruned and now, combined with widespread blight, are no longer in good condition. Rejuvenation is the horticulturist team's best action to avoid permanently losing these shrubs. Some stands may be in poor enough health that they won't be able to rebound while others will come back strong. Those that rebound will be added to the pruning rotation to ensure proper structural pruning occurs in the next few years. Moving to planning, we have the Hennepin, or sorry, we have the Kennelworth Channel Repair. This channel will remain open while the project is finished up and the bank stabilization, finished up with bank stabilization and spring planting. A project that removed old wooden walls in the Kennelworth Channel and replaced them with naturalized shoreline is nearly complete. The bulk of the work was completed December last year. On April 25th, the project resumed with bank stabilization and planting vegetation. This phase is expected to take two, excuse me, four to six weeks. The channel remained open to paddlers, but please stay away from the areas where work is being performed. Please do not disturb the new plants. Sorry. Public meeting and onsite tour scheduled for the North Minneapolis Riverfront Trail Connection Project. The proposed 1,000-foot trail connection extends a trail past the terminus of West River Road and creates new riverside experiences in North Minneapolis. It will connect to the 26th Avenue North Overlook, which opened last May, to the downtown riverfront and the Grand Rounds. The NPRB is asking for community feedback to help develop a preferred concept. Input can be offered through any of the following means. A public meeting on May 9th from 6 until 7:30 PM. This will be an online meeting with a presentation allowing enough time for questions and feedback. The presentation will be posted online after the meeting. A site tour on Saturday, May 14th from 3 until 4. Participants will meet at Ole Olson Park, 2325 West River Road, and walk to the Mississippi River while design team members explain the concepts. An online public comment form is also available to collect general feedback on the project at www.surveymonkey.com/r/26-olson-trail. Visit the Park Board project page to join the meetings. North Commons Park Phase 1 Improvements. The concept design and community engagement phases have begun for North Commons Park Improvements Project. Staff recently released the series of community engagement opportunities, including open houses, both virtual and in-person, staff consultant office hours, and RFP for paid community collaborators, and a week-long design scheduled for late June. The project will build a new community center, a new water park, a new playground and a new parking lot, along with other site improvements. The concept design phase is scheduled to be complete after 2022. For more information, visit our website. And last, but certainly not least, is the carpentry training program, Year Two. In concert with the Hennepin County's Productive Day Training Program, the NPRB will build on last year's successful carpentry training pilot program. Paid trainees resided the Art Godfrey House in Chute Square, learning the basics of the carpentry trade during the three-month course. Trainees spend four days each week in the field and one day each week gaining basic life skills, are paid $15 per hour for their time and are provided with basic tools and personal protective equipment. Their work resulted in the rehabilitation of the structure, which had been subjected to rotting siding and ornamental woodwork. All five trainees who completed the program are now employed with construction companies as union carpenters or laborers. In 2022, the training program will be extended to a full six-month course focused on Longfellow House and the Stevens House, both of which suffer from the same issues as the Art Godfrey House. There we go.
Wonderful. Wow. Active in the parks. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Deputy Superintendent Ringel? Any questions? No? Okay. All right. So with that, then, any reports that commissioners have of their appointments outside boards, commissions or the committees? Yes, Commissioner Bennie.
Thank you, President Forney. I attended a meeting of the City Audit Committee on April 25th and I have a couple of highlights. The first is the police, Park Police Body Worn Camera Audit was completed. This is a biennial audit mandated by state law. The report states that the NPRB Police Department operates within compliance with state statute. The audit is complete and the report will be filed with the state. The second, I think, interesting thing that we talked about was the Internal Audit Director, Patrick, presented an opportunity with the new city government structure. So the Internal Audit Department will remain independent, not reporting to the mayor or council, but continuing to report to the committee. And going forward, additional staffing is being recommended to add public safety auditors with subject matter expertise who can be dedicated to risk-based audit of public safety functions at the city. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Awesome. Any questions to Commissioner Bennie? Thank you for the report. Commissioner Mens.
Yes, I attended the Board of Estment Taxation Meeting last Wednesday prior to and through our budget retreat. And we're currently working through not having a staff person at the BET and it's been challenging to work without a staff person dedicated to the independent nature of the Board of Estment Taxation. So we're working through that. We're getting staff recommendations from HR at the city. One of the things that the board did decide is to do an independent study of some interesting bonding measures to almost preview some bonding and save some money, save the taxpayers money, but by borrowing money before interest rates hike up. So it was kind of an interesting discussion because usually we would have the Board of Estment Taxation staff person do that, but we had to sort of commission an independent contractor through the city. So that's going forward. We'll have another meeting on May 11th. But that's sort of where we're at.
Thank you. Any questions to Commissioner Mens? Not seeing any. Okay, moving on. We're on to our consent agenda. Any people want to pull any for discussion? Otherwise, it's Resolution 2022-181 through 2022-1, no, they're all independent. Anyway, 2022-185, 2022-184, 2022-190. I would love to have a motion on those. I would move that slate.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving those items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that action also moves. All right, that carries. Thank you. Okay, on to standing committees. We have the Planning Committee. Who's up for that one?
Me.
Yes, good. Commissioner Elper, go for it.
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 2022-178. It's a resolution approving the creation of a parkland development and easement agreement with Crow Companies for application of the private land maintained for public use, parkland dedication option to a proposed development at 310 North Second Street in the North Loop of Minneapolis in order to provide a connection between public streets and the Cedar Lake Regional Trail.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on that matter? I'm not seeing any lights. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries as well. Admin and Finance, who's up this round?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move Resolution 2022-151, Resolution approving a subsequent cooperative agreement between the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board, Bassett Creek Watershed Management Commission and the City of Minneapolis for the construction of the park elements and the city elements and the commission's reimbursement to the NPRB and the city for said construction of the Water Quality Improvements Project at Bryn Mawr Meadows Park.
Anybody have a second, please? Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? I'm not seeing any lights. Oh, yes, one's light. Please, Commissioner Bennie.
Just a quick thing. I was in the packet. I didn't see any graphics associated with this one. And I went back to the 23rd of March, too, and I didn't. Is there a way just to have that, I'm just curious, to have it sent what the, you know, the concept plan that's been prepared so far?
Would you like a little presentation on it? Do we have one, Tyler? Yes. Would you like to just see the map or you want to see, have a better explanation?
Commissioner Bennie, are you looking for a graphic of the whole project or just what's going on with the water?
The stormwater basins, basically, and how they're connecting into the city infrastructure. But, and I couldn't find it online, so.
Okay, so we don't have, you know, technical drawings online, but we can certainly make that available to you. I can certainly forward that if you'd like.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. All right. Not seeing any other lights and everything. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. On to the next resolution. Commissioner.
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 2022-173. This is a resolution to repeal Resolution 2020-232, Resolution directing the Superintendent of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board to make certain changes pertaining to policing within Minneapolis parkland, including ceasing the use of Minneapolis Police to staff park sanctioned events and ceasing park police response to Minneapolis Police Department calls.
A second I'm looking for?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that item? I'm seeing one light going on. Okay, Commissioner Elper.
Thank you. Fellow commissioners, I am voting no tonight on this resolution and I would like to explain my vote and urge you also to vote no. First of all, as many of you have stated at our previous meeting, Park Police and MPD already work closely together by using the same dispatch systems and 911 technology. This never stopped and the results of this resolution do not change that relationship. Second, this resolution is being brought to us on the premise that it will ensure safety at large park events, like the Twin Cities Marathon and Pride at Loring Park. The security threats at these large events are very real and terrifying. They include people driving large vehicles into crowds of event attendees and people with either legally or illegally acquired guns shooting into crowds. I remain skeptical about how more police will prevent these attacks. Third, whether or not this resolution passes, there's a high likelihood that there will not be the amount of security staff needed per policy in order to hold these events and that they instead would be canceled. We have already been turned down by multiple jurisdictions for event help. We have no guarantee that the Minneapolis Police Department, which is roughly 300 officers short, will be able to work park events, nor may they want to at our permit holder price of $85 an hour, when private institutions like Orchestra Hall and the Minnesota Twins are hiring off-duty Minneapolis police officers for between $120 to $150 per hour. Indeed, events in our sister city across the river are being canceled right and left due to the skyrocketing costs for security and lack of staff. Fourth, around our city, we have serious public safety issues, which are not getting the attention they deserve and that taxpayers pay for by our existing Minneapolis Police Department. Just yesterday, I attended a public safety meeting at Little Earth where people talked about mothers and their children's under virtual lockdown due to the daily threat of gun violence. Think about not being able to leave your home because of fear of dying. Fifth, and most importantly, we have a city police department with proven records of racism and violations of human rights. Have you read the Minnesota Department of Human Rights report? It is scathing. Now is not the time to invite and reward Minneapolis police officers with the opportunity to work beyond their 40-hour-per-week job, especially when the department barely can do their core job. To vote yes on this resolution is to provide $190,000 of bonus pay to Minneapolis Police, which they do not deserve. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson. We're close to open time, but go for it.
I just, just in response to Commissioner Elper, I respect your thoughts and what you have heard from people. The gun violence thing, though, when you're living over north, it's, I have people who text me every night about the gunfire that they hear, and these are my neighbors. text me every night about the gunfire that they hear, and these are my neighbors. There's, there are a lot of issues. And I respect very much that this does not solve all of the problems that we have. But, I do believe healing community starts with working together, and I furthermore believe that if we want to change systems of public safety, and Commissioner Menz said it really well in our last, in our last meeting, that we need a seat at the table. And I think that we and our, and our staff and our body are more nimble to maybe engage in those kind of relationships. And all this repealing does, because it was all the initial thing did, was just give the chance. And you did say that St. Paul has had to cancel a lot of things. I read that same article, and I was like, well, this is exactly why I'm understanding from our expert, which is Chief Ojado, why we need to help come together. So, I respectfully disagree, and I appreciate all you had to say.
Not seeing any... Oh, okay. Well, I'm going to pause because it is 5:30 and we do have open time. So, we will, what do we say? Take this up after our open time and we... Open time. Thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during open time. Before we start, I want to provide an abbreviated version of the open time board rules. All individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda or can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on the sign-up list only. Open time for public input shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes with a time limit to be allocated by me, the president. Please watch the timer to be considerate of others here to speak, and the timer is right up here, okay? To speak and stay within your allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be given without debate and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. Two types of items are not appropriate for open time in order to protect the privacy of all individuals. Those are pending litigation and personnel issues. Please refrain from connecting, commenting, excuse me, on specific personnel issues. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone. Please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with that policy. And we do have six people who would like to speak tonight, so I'm going to allow six minutes for each one of them. And the first person is Rachel Sartor, and after that is going to be Joe Mitchell. Rachel, are you in?
I meant three, if I said... I apologize. Six people, three minutes each. Yeah, okay. Give me a long night, gang. Okay, anyway.
So, is Rachel in? Rachel Sartor? Is Joe Mitchell here? Okay, well, we've got Cat Usherco, and I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong, but please come forward. And then after that is going to be Brian, Brin Casper, I believe.
Hi. I wrote down what I wanted to say, but it was for a full 15 minutes, so I'm going to abbreviate. I'm here to talk about trees. I spoke with a few of you guys about trees at the last meeting, and I have some more to share on this topic. So, I want to bring your attention today to the current policies around tree conservation and how they're impacting our community negatively and not going nearly far enough to preserve and protect our environment. I have a proposal for how we can approve this, and I hope that you will take that proposal under consideration, both in the short term and the long term. I became especially passionate about this issue after witnessing dozens of trees come down in my community in the past month. I live right next to the Stone Arch Bridge, and the recent projects in Father Hennepin Bluff Park, as well as Mindot's restoration of the Stone Arch Bridge, have together caused over 20 trees to be cut. These have included trees along the sensitive bluff area, old trees, and young trees that were recently just planted. I encourage you to come to the area yourself and take a look at what has been going on there, especially along the bluff right next to the Stone Arch Bridge. This is especially stark as it's being done in an area that is already sparse in tree life, and some of the trees are being cut to make room for new park structures, all while an empty paved parking lot sits across the street. And this board maintains a 200K-plus surplus in funding to purchase property. So, in attending the board meeting last week and reaching out to members of this board, we were able to reduce the number of total trees being cut in the Father Hennepin Project. I want to thank Councilmember Menz for his attention and action on this issue. However, I am asking for more to be done to protect our parks and tree canopy in both the short and the long terms. In the short term, the Mindot Stone Arch Bridge Restoration Project has taken to cutting down multiple trees along the bluff in order to improve visibility and reduce graffiti. At least eight trees have already been cut near my home, and there is risk of many more going down on both sides of the river. I'm here to let you know that the community cares about these trees. We do not want them gone. And speaking with neighbors and even with the tree removal crew themselves, folks are very unhappy about this seemingly needless destruction. I request the board to work with Mindot to provide a report to the community on how many trees are set to be cut as part of this project, why, and allow for community members to have input into this decision, and then immediately reevaluate the destruction of any further trees and commit to reducing this as a part of this specific project. Unfortunately, even if we make improvements for this specific project, there is a larger-picture issue in our city that is causing the tree canopy to be reduced and putting our goals of increasing our climate resiliency at risk. This inefficiency ties directly to how the commission and city are structuring their goals and subsequently policies on tree canopy. You can take action in this session to prevent this from happening in the future. Last week, you saw the revised draft of the 2023 through 2026 Strategic Directions and Performance Goals. In attending this meeting, I heard a significant amount of thoughtful discussion around many of the important and beneficial areas of this proposal. I want to thank... Is that it? Okay, can I just add one last thing, which is the proposal itself? I propose that you adjust the tree canopy section of this report to have the goal of, by 2026, implement a sustainable, quantifiable tree canopy increase plan that strengthens the resiliency of parks and riverfront territory and grows the overall canopy by 25%. This would be instead of just replanting trees. Replanting trees would be a subpart of this goal, but really focusing on increasing canopy as well as tracking and reporting how many trees are being cut in any given project to allow both the board and the public a chance to understand what tree reduction is happening.
If you want to, I wanted to email that to us.
Yes, I definitely will.
All right, that would be appreciated. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Brin Casper, and then after that is Nicole Cavender.
Hello again, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. So, when the Hiawatha Master Plan passes, our support does not end. Our advocacy for the land, the lake, and the history of golf on this land does not end. We are energizing a community that cares about Lake Hiawatha and Hiawatha Golf Course to make this space the most inclusive, equitable, and ecologically logical championship nine-hole golf course surrounded by a beautifully restored ecosystem. Golf supported by nature. We are not losing golf or erasing golf or the history of golf at Hiawatha. We honor it while making sure the golf course and parkland are around for generations to come. I beg you to please do your research, read the master plan, read about, and maybe even reach out to local BIPOC environmental justice advocates to get their take on this issue. We are just two years away from the 10-year anniversary of the last 10-year flood at Hiawatha. We have two years, give or take, before Mother Nature may make a decision for us. When the Lehman 18-hole concept fails to withstand engineering rigor, environmental rigor, and community rigor, you must not delay action any longer. Please support and pass the master plan. Thank you. And I hope you get to enjoy the beautiful weather today.
Thank you, Brin. Nicole, and then Michael Gru.
Hello, President Bornee and all of the Commissioners. It's really good to see you all again. I've spoken with many of you. I am Nicole Cavender, as you know, and I live in South Minneapolis. I'm speaking today about a different topic, the Native Land Acknowledgement. I am really hopeful, knowing that the MPRB is discussing the adoption of a Native Land Acknowledgement. And when I spoke to family members to talk about it, they had not heard. And so, then I talked with the tribal council members where my mother grew up, and they had not heard either. So, I reached out to a few other tribal councils and found more confusion. So, I request two things after talking with the elders from different tribal councils. I hope that the preferred form of contact via each sovereign tribal council happened directly with a tribal council member at at least the four most local tribal, Dakota tribal councils, in no particular order. The Midwankatin Tribal Council, the Upper Sioux Tribal Council, Lower Sioux Tribal Council, and Prairie Island Tribal Council specifically, just because, you know, the land that we are on more specifically affects these four. But contacting all four sovereign tribal councils, I don't mean to dismiss anybody who is Dakota because this is their homeland. That would be preferred for all 11 to be contacted through a conversation in person, preferably, but at least voice-to-voice. Please take and weigh in their advice most heavily while deciding the best consultant to provide education and guidance in the process all of you Commissioners will be making should this move forward. Please have the person appropriate from the MPRB to reach out to schedule meetings, preferably, as I said, in person for a conversation with the tribal councils. And two, the second request, I know that was long, while considering the wording of your Native Land Acknowledgement, please, please consider the purpose of a Native Land Acknowledgement. Why they exist is specific. There was a brief mention of broadening the Native Land Acknowledgement. There are, I agree, and many will, that there are many wrongs that have been done on these lands since it was stolen from the Dakota people. Those wrongs are extremely valid and deserve their own acknowledgement. To broaden a Native Land Acknowledgement, to include more wrongs to more communities, feels insensitive to all the communities that would be in that acknowledgement. And I am concerned about the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board starting out this way. Thank you for your consideration.
Perfect timing. Very good. Okay, so, next is Michael Gru, and my understanding is that Rachel Sartor is here. Michael, next?
Good evening, board members, community members, peers from staff. It's nice to be here. It's nice to be able to see you all. And I want to come with, I want to come with praise and thanksgiving, perhaps precautions, but a real recognition and acknowledgement of the efforts that are put forth here at the board. And, you know, it's, I don't like to coin the word hierarchy, but clearly there's protocol that's to be followed in that. And I believe the park board is making really great efforts to, to address that.
Speaking to the microphone, sorry.
I'm glad you guys can hear me, but now everyone can hear me better. So, with praise and thanksgiving and real appreciation and wanting to come and just recognize that as a longtime community member, raising my daughter in this area before moving out to other suburban areas and being around beautiful parks, it just doesn't rival coming up in St. Paul, my hometown, crossing the river, it just doesn't rival. Driving here today, coming down miles and miles of river road from my home, that's my route that I've taken. It's where I used to drive before everyone drives it. And seeing so many different stories, so many different families, so many different people enjoying and appreciating what's being done here. And I agree with the three previous speakers wholeheartedly. And then I also recognize that there is a balance. There's a, there's a, there's an invitation and a challenge for that balance. So, moving back in and having a bird's eye view, if you will, of the park system, it's been beautiful to see that transform as, as we all transform, to see that grow and to be nurtured as we hopefully grow and are nurtured as well. Being an employee with Minneapolis Park and Rec Board has been amazing. It's been amazing. And it's been challenging, and I'm all the more blessed for it. And though seasons change, like our lives are faced with difficulties, we recognize and we appreciate creation. But I stand before you and I recognize and I appreciate the Creator, and I appreciate what you do here. And I appreciate being able to say confidently and comfortably that any prior issues have been resolved. Thank you, board members, for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael. Rachel, if you are here, we'd love to hear from you. Rachel Sartor.
One last thing. I am going to go out and paddleboard right now. I'd love to stay and enjoy the rest of it, but I'd rather go out and enjoy the park and rec system that's around here. I don't know by any coincidence that 2019 didn't get the Park and Rec Award. I'm just saying, if we were to look back upon past emails and whatnot, we might better understand that. But that being said, we're going for that title again. Parks for all.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Rachel? And then Joe Mitchell, if he's arrived?
Thank you. I'm sorry that I was late. So, my name is Rachel Sartor, and I'm a mom and social worker living in the Standish neighborhood. I wanted to talk with you about Lake Hiawatha. I live about six blocks from Lake Hiawatha and from the Hiawatha Golf Course. And I'm probably not one of the best-informed people in this room or, you know, someone that's given a lot of time to this, and yet I just wanted to come and bring my voice because Lake Hiawatha has meant so much to us in terms of what it's like to live in the Standish neighborhood. Also, the golf course has meant a lot to us. We're out there skiing all winter. So, it's, for us, one of the things that we love the most about living, living in Minneapolis is the fact that there is so much nature. However, I think about like the times where my, my son has been able to play at Wood Lake or places like that in other communities nearby. And something like that, that's so natural, seems like an opportunity of Lake Hiawatha, but something that hasn't been fully realized. I am understanding that there's the comprehensive master plan that's been, been put forward and that you guys are considering to vote on, but that there is another proposal that would make the, make the lake more into kind of a holding pool and focus more on making more space for the golf course. And I do understand that there's a, there's a deep history of African-Americans having access to golf through that golf course. So, I'm, I'm appreciative of that. And when I review the master plan, I see a compromise and I see, I see education and I see opportunities and I see with the, with the retention of the nine, nine-hole golf course, an opportunity to express appreciation for that history while also expressing through the, the master plan as I read it, and the value of that, of that natural space for wildlife, for human beings, and also connecting with the history of the Dakota in that area. So, I'm thinking about the master plan as a, as a really respectful, caring, and meaningful piece of work that was put forward and that, and that I support. And I just want to say that, that when I, when I read it, I feel excited, and I feel excited on a lot of different levels, including the way that it might be able to bring attention to the, the history of African and American experience in our neighborhood as well as these other elements. So, I'm seeing it as something that holds both of those things, and I look forward as a neighbor to embracing all of those things if the master plan were to be voted on. So, just wanted to offer my support for that plan and appreciate you all for your work. As the previous speaker said, we have an amazing system, and I'm so grateful to be in this, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Joe Mitchell, are you there?
He's not coming.
Oh, he's not coming. Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification. I will close the open time and move back to our discussion. And I believe that Commissioner Menz, you are wishing to speak.
Yes, so, I've done a lot of reflection on this issue over the past couple of weeks and done a lot of independent investigation by talking with folks and feeling like how I can rectify this in my own brain because I, change is necessary at the Minneapolis Police Department. It was obvious. It's been obvious for a while. And at last week- And at last week's meeting during committee, two weeks ago, it seemed to me that the best course of action was to have a seat at that table. But in going through the last two weeks and talking to many people, including young people who frequent the parks and including people of color who frequent the parks and wondering and asking the question just to them and hearing that do more police at our events make them safer? And are we willing at this point as this board to reinstate our relationship with the Minneapolis Police Department? Is that, is that where we have our leverage? Two weeks ago, I thought maybe that was, and I think that it needed to go to this full board, and I was supportive of that. But I am voting no to that reinstatement because I think that right now and in light of the report that we knew was going to come out and we knew was going to say some difficult realities, it is scathing and it is scary. And it is scary that that culture has existed for so long. And I personally think that our change, the way that we impact this community and policing is by forcing our staff to, to figure out a different way. And if we have to cancel events, there might be some events canceled temporarily. But I believe in our staff and our police department and us as a board that we can figure out different ways to police or keep safe people at our events. And I think that the way to do that is to, to have some consequences, which might be that we have to cancel some events in an effort to figure this out in a different way to police. But during the campaign, in my own personal life, I value and support police officers and public safety. But I don't think that the current state of how we police in this city is working. And I cannot, in good conscience, reinstate that relationship, at least with my vote. Thanks.
Wait a second.
Point of information?
Okay. Somehow I was thinking that was Commissioner Schaefer's light. It's your right, excuse me.
I just wanted to, Commissioner Menz said more police in parks, and I'm, I'm just wondering if that's an accurate phrase of what would happen if, if we reinstated this. Can I ask Chief O'Hara that?
Certainly. Yep. Chief O'Hara, do you like to speak to that?
Can I, can I clarify? More police at park events.
Yes, I would like to have Chief O'Hara speak to that.
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, I had a hard time hearing your question. Could you repeat it, please?
I, I believe Commissioner Menz said that, that this, or implied that this reinstatement would mean more police at park or in park events. Is that an accurate statement, given what this repeal would do?
President Forni and Commissioner Thompson, I, I don't think characterizing it as more is accurate. I think that we have baseline protocols in place around the number of officers that are required for certain activities and events, and we're trying to meet those baselines. And we have a scarcity of resources internally. So in order to hit those baselines, we need supplemental help. It's not about putting more officers at events, it's about hitting those thresholds.
Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, so, you know, I spoke at length at this in the Admin and Finance Committee, so I don't need to go over everything. I think people know where I stand. I'll be voting no and just wanted to, you know, emphasize and there's some other points that, you know, I definitely, I think everyone sitting up here should absolutely read the report. Everyone listening should read the Human Rights Report or find a good summary. Minnesota Reformer had a good summary of some of the most egregious issues on there. I think it's really important that we kind of all have a base level of understanding of what we're working with going forward. And yeah, so, you know, if this does pass, I, I actually had some questions for you, Chief O'Hara. Do you think you could, if it wouldn't be too much trouble to perhaps a year from now or a couple of years from now have perhaps a report on the effectiveness of restoring the park event relationship with police? And, you know, if we, you know, had this many officers come, which enabled us to have this more events and, you know, or because there is concern that it may not result in that, and I think it's important that we know that so that we can find other solutions if we still need to find other solutions. So is that something that could be possible?
President Forni, Commissioner Olson, I'm happy to provide that, that report to the board. I know that President Forni has been meeting with Superintendent Bangora, asking for more regular reports around the Park Police Department, and that certainly could be a topic for future reports.
Great, yeah, I would appreciate that. And yeah, and this is, you know, not related to this direct resolution, but, you know, people are bringing up gun violence across the city. And, I mean, it's just everywhere. Our, our city, our, our state, our, our nation are plagued by guns, and I know we don't have a ton of control over that, but I hope in our individual lives and in other capacities we can work towards, you know, reducing the amount of firearms in our communities. I mean, just the other day, I was going to bed and heard a couple dozen semi-automatic gunshots, and behold, next day, someone was killed a couple of blocks away from my house and someone was found bleeding out outside of a retirement home. It's, I mean, there's just too many weapons in our communities, and it's really frustrating. So I'll be voting no. I, I can't endorse working with this racist police department. But I, going forward, I hope we can pursue this effectively, and I do trust that you'll be able to do that. So thank you.
Commissioner Bennie.
I put my light on before you finished your comments, Commissioner Olson, but I actually really appreciate what you just asked the, the chief, which is what I would ask as well, that, you know, no disrespect intended to the members of this board that sat on the last board, but the last board didn't, they, they sanctioned the MPD, but they didn't do anything. And because of the pandemic and events weren't, weren't happening. And so I think, as Commissioner Thompson said, you know, this is about community, and this is really only, I think, for the largest of the events, and bringing them back, I think would be just so important for the community. And I also trust the chief, you know, the last meeting when we talked about this, he talked about the ways in which he vets and assigns work and the police officers that he knows personally that I'll reach out to. And I, I know this isn't popular, and the report was horrible, and I'm so glad so many of us have read it, and every bit of it. But I, I know this isn't a popular statement, but there, there are not, it's not all the police, it's not the whole police, it's not all of the individual members of the police force that have those behaviors. But it is, it is some, and they're, they're terrible, and they need to be rooted out. So anyway, I think that having these events back is, is to me the weighing factor and that we should be giving resources to the chief so that we can, you know, expand some of our alternative methods that we are already deploying with our police force. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I just want to concur with Commissioner Bennie that I do support the chief's direction in this and Superintendent Bangora's feedback around this issue and this idea of us coming back together and providing access to our parks that has been denied through COVID, through some of these events having to be shut down, I think is really important for us to celebrate and to get back to the posture of Michael and his enthusiasm around our parks and to be able to come together and say, you know what, we're, we're going to face this together. It was, that report made me cry reading that, and we've got to do better. But this, this amendment doesn't do anything about fixing reform for MPD, punishing reform for MPD. It's denying greater safety for the general community at our, our events and for nonviolent situations and calls that may come up. So I will be supporting this. And, and the comments around gun violence, I absolutely agree, Commissioner Olson. And it triggered for me, I'm just going to read this briefly, this was an editorial, you can look it up, by D.J. Tice called "A Crossfire of Hard Truth on Crime and Policing." And he quotes a couple economists with a title, a white paper entitled "The Demand for Protection and the Persistently High Rates of Gun Violence Among Young Black Males." And one quote in there is what really gets at my heart because he says, "Young black male homicide victims are 77 times more likely to have been killed by a civilian than by a cop." And this is where we have power as a board, right? What are we doing for our youth and our communities that are plagued for gun violence? Where are we stepping up? Where are we really having a plan to deal with how we're going to handle that when that comes up in our parks? And it has. So that's my challenge to us. We all care about it. But I, from my perspective, this is a little different angle, and this is more about the general safety of the community and not a statement against really trying to punish MPD in any way. Thank you.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forni. I'm, I'm very thankful to my colleagues for clearly having put a lot of thought into the decision that we're making tonight. I also very much appreciate the work that Chief O'Hara has done and Superintendent Bangora has done to educate the board about the actual impacts of the action taken by the board previously. When we, when we made that resolution, we did it very rapidly, and we did it thinking it would have a far greater impact than it did on the behavior of the MPD in our city. It also did not remove the MPD from the parks. They're still providing services to people that are in the park system when our staff is off duty. And, and I believe that we created a, a false belief in the public's eye that the MPD never would be on park property again after we passed that resolution, and it's just not true. So this evening, I will be supporting the repeal of that resolution and hoping that it brings us to a place where the public understands that we live in a very closely integrated city of public service in which people that are available to respond may be coming from an agency other than the MPD to help them. And if they're in a park, it may not be a park police officer that is going to be able to respond to them because they're not closest. So, yeah, I'm hopeful that, that this will get us to a place where people are more understanding of, of how closely everyone is working together to try to keep people safe and respond when they're in need, and that we are able to bring back events that bring people together because it is, it is very important to people that they have those ability, that ability to connect with each other around things that bring them joy. So thank you for your time this evening.
Commissioner Olson.
All right, just two quick things. So, yeah, so we never ceased the relationship, but we did cease park police response to Minneapolis Police Department calls. So is that true that we didn't, we haven't, since this resolution passed, we haven't gone to any calls outside of the parks that were stemming from?
I'm assuming you're referring to Chief O'Hara.
Yeah, sorry. Is that the?
President Forni and Commissioner Olson, if I recall the language correctly, it prohibited park officers from responding to nonviolent calls outside of the parks. So we have responded to many incidents of violence in which officers, park officers are in a position to assist. My, my primary concern is around emergencies that are not the result of violence. So there are medical emergencies, overdoses, car crashes, which this resolution technically prohibits a response to. And I think our officers have an ethical and a professional obligation to intervene when they can help.
So was the call, calling officers to George Floyd, would that have been considered a violent or a nonviolent call at the time?
President Forni, Commissioner Olson, that's an interesting question. The, the park officer that responded to that was, was responding to a request for backup. They weren't the initial responder to the forgery in progress at Cup Foods. They were responding to a plea for assistance from other officers. So is that, is that nonviolent? Is that violent? I'm not sure how I would characterize that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's such a tough situation, and, sorry, I don't have any more questions for you. And because you do mention all the important situations where, where, you know, we, we do, we are in a community and it is important that we support outside, but, you know, at the same time, by, you know, responding to more calls, you know, it's, it's not a matter of, you know, if there's going to be another tragic death caused by the Minneapolis Police Department, it's pretty much when. And I just, it's just really, I know, it's really tough. I don't, I don't, I don't want to have a park police officer at, you know, present at the murder of, of a civilian. So, but I, yeah, I don't, that's hyperbolic, I'm sorry, but it's, it did happen, I guess. Anyway, so I just had that question, then I also wanted to request a roll call. Thank you.
Request a what?
A roll call.
Oh, roll call. Oh, sorry, thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other lights. So, and Deputy Sue, did you have a, I saw your light for a second.
President Forni, thank you. I was just going to assist with the resolution in terms of what the specificity was, in terms of type of call. I believe what happened is during the discussion, there was an amendment at the board level, so that's why the actual resolved clause is different than what the actual outcome was. So just a clarifier there. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. So on that request and everything, will the secretary please take the roll call?
Commissioner Bennie.
Aye.
Commissioner Musich.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Elper.
No.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Nay.
Commissioner Olson.
No.
Vice President Smith. President Forni.
Aye.
You have five ayes, three nays, one abstain.
Motion carries. Moving on to Resolution 2022-179.
Yes, I would like to bring forward a motion to, for Resolution 2022-179, Resolution approving the temporary use of the Bell of the USS Minneapolis, being property of the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board by the Minnesota Navy League Council for the commissioning of the USS Minneapolis St. Paul LCS 21 at the Port of Duluth in May 2022.
Second. Thank you. Any questions, any need for, on that item? No? Okay. Not seen any. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on to the next one.
I would like to move Resolution 2022-180, Resolution amending the 2022 Enterprise Capital Improvement Program to direct an additional $1 million to the Bide Makaska Refectory within the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park.
Second. Okay, got a second. Any discussion on the item? Any discussion? I'm not seeing any lights. Okay. All those in favor, and as, this isn't land. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on to the next item.
I would like to move Resolution 30/2022, Resolution awarding a construction contract to Morcon Construction in the amount of $6,225,700 for the debate, Bide Makaska Refectory within the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park per bid event number MPLN 1918. Pending approval by City of Minneapolis Procurement Division and Civil Rights Department, authorizing administrative use of 10% construction contingency up to $622,570 for necessary construction change orders that may arise within the contract and further authorizing the transfer of $750,000 from the Regional Park Operations Maintenance Grant Match Fund.
Wonderful. Does that take a second? Great. Any, oh, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I would, I talked to Daniel earlier today, and thank you for just giving us an update and more detail around the boat launch that we heard from Deputy Superintendent tonight.
Thank you, President Forni, Commissioner Schaefer, commissioners. So a real high-level update on the impacts of this project, the Bide Makaska Boat Launch. Through the construction contract, we will be closing the boat launch this year. contract, we will be closing the boat launch this year on May 30th through September 16th. So allowing buoy holders, excuse me, to get their boats to their buoys, and then closing that boat launch, and then reopening it in the fall for removal. We do plan to engage the contractor around a potential delay to that closure, to allow for an additional week to get boats on the water, and then engage them as well around the possibility of a weekend or two that could be open during construction for anglers and for those who have their boats on the water. The rationale for the boat launch closure is really around the construction project itself. It'll be used for construction material storage, both in-going and outgoing, for a potential construction trailer, contractor parking. We do plan to slightly realign the north curb of the boat launch as well as part of the construction. We'll be installing erosion control, both in the water and on land in that area as well, so maintaining that throughout the construction. And then the intent is really, because it's such a tight site, to provide the contractor with enough space to facilitate this, the construction project within the timeline we've identified, and while reducing costs as much as possible. We have been coordinating with all of the, both tenants that work around this area, as well as other agencies already in advance of this contract award. Minneapolis Sailing Center has done drop-off and pickup operation when this boat launch has been impacted by a 2017 trail project, so they'll be reinstituting that drop-off scenario while this area is impacted. The wheel fund rentals will remain open this summer for park users. We've been working with park board maintenance on all the things that they have to do, both on and off the water. We do have an emergency launch just to the north of our project site for the Hennepin County Sheriff. There are water emergencies. The weed harvester will also use that area just to the north of the construction project. And then we will be working with the contractor to identify some parking areas to try to keep them out of the neighborhood as best as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on that presentation, plus also the motion? That's, oh, yes, Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, we probably don't quite have this information yet, but at some point, will we have estimates of, you know, annual revenue, profit generated from this facility, and if it will be able to kind of pay for its future maintenance costs and things of that nature? Sorry, that's a big question.
Thank you, President Forney. Commissioner Olson, I'll ask Shane Stenzel to come and help.
Welcome, Mr. Stenzel.
President Forney, Commissioner Olson, can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Yeah, so just wondering if, at this point in time, if we have any understanding, or any predictions of, you know, the amount of revenue or profit that this facility will generate, and if it will be able to, you know, kind of sustain itself in the future?
Sure, sure. Right now, we're in the middle of negotiations on the contracts. I can't really speak to the contract, but the facility itself, the actual design, is designed for around a $2 to $2.5 million facility in return. So, taking a previous concession and actually building something that has a capacity, storage capacity, kitchen capacity, seating capacities, that maybe wasn't there at the old one, that was one of the criteria when we put the plan together, was to increase revenues. So regardless of tenant, that is the goal, is to increase revenues through those, through those improvements.
Awesome. Yeah, I just want to, you know, make sure with any project like this, when we're, you know, spending a ton of money on something new, that we really are looking at, you know, not necessarily increasing our future maintenance costs or whatever, without having a way to pay for it, because we do have a big system. So, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now where are we at now? Oh, recreation. Who's doing recreation today?
I guess I shall do it.
Oh, great. Vice President Smith, go for it.
All right. I would move Resolution 51-2022, Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and the University of Minnesota Research Team in Pursuit of the Parks and Recreation for Kids Park Study.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the item?
Yes, plenty.
Okay, all right. Vice President Smith, go for it.
I have a couple of questions for the research team.
Okay, I believe, okay. Mr. Nellner, you're here, and is anybody else here from the U? Oh, I believe so.
Good evening, President Forney and Commissioners. Simone French is back again tonight. She was here with us last month. She is the principal investigator for the study. We have also invited all of the research team to join us, so they will be able to respond directly to your questions if it falls within their domain. So please, we invite your questions and feedback.
Awesome. Simone, welcome.
They owe me $1,000. All right. Are they coming up forward, or am I just asking to an imaginary person?
Yeah, why don't you guys come up forward, so at least you're accessible for questions? Go for it.
Okay, so, first, an easy question. There's a lot of reference to the language in which the information will be transferred, or translated, excuse me, and it only referenced Spanish and English. Is there a reason why we're lacking the other languages spoke in these communities?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question. I heard that it's only offered in English. The second language that it's offered in is Spanish, and that's due to affordability. We just have money to translate it into one language, and based on our work with a previous study, Spanish speakers were the main people who were interested in enrolling in another study before this, and that was the basis of the choice. If we had an unlimited budget, we would translate it into all languages that were, people were interested in participating in. But it was, we don't have unlimited funds, so we chose Spanish.
Got it. I understand. Money can be tight. Hence, why people need support and community to do programs. So my other question is, the last time you were here, when we talked about this, and I asked for the infograph, kind of explaining what would happen, there was a failure to mention the little data tracker device that will be possibly hip to a young person or their family. Can I get more explanation on what would be the purpose? What information will actually be captured by this wireless Bluetooth device that is proposed to go onto families in exchange for a $70 stipend?
Yes, Vice President Smith, I did bring a copy, an example of the device. It's called an actographic accelerometer, and we actually will not be enabling the Bluetooth. And so what it does, will pick up the intensity level of the physical activity, because that's one of our main outcomes. So we all know that physical activity has lots of health benefits, and so we want to see whether or not the children who are enrolled in the program, that they're actually able to increase their physical activity. And so we'll be looking at whether or not the amount of time they're spent in sanitary activity, light, moderate, and vigorous activity. We're not able to track, we won't be able to track where they are, or, yeah, we won't be able to track where they are. It moves on like a forward, backward, up and down in the Z plane, in terms of capturing the amount of activity. And the device itself is placed on the waist, and participants will be told during the consent process, if for some reason they don't want to wear it, they do not have to wear it. Everything is voluntary. But this is always a question. So I'm a physical activity epidemiologist at the University of Minnesota, so I get this question a lot. I've been using this for many years. There's always the concern, because it is a device, and whether or not it's going to track locations of children or whoever is wearing it. But I assure you, we are not enabling those capabilities, and it's strictly about how much activity the children are getting. So we will see whether or not they increase their activity or decrease their activity from being involved in the program.
Got it. And so, by not turning on the Bluetooth component of it, is that a thing that you all manually control, or is that something that's controlled digitally somewhere else?
Oh, when we are, so the way that this device works is that we have to, what we call initialize it, and so that's to set it up, so it can start to collect data. And when you're initializing it, because some people are really interested in like the proximity of activity, and that you can enable it, but we do not enable that capability at all for this device. And so it's not anything that we can turn on at a later date. It has to be turned on when you initialize the device, and we do not use that. It's just not necessary for this study. We're not interested in where they are active. We just want to see how active the children are.
Okay. And if they don't wear the device, they can still participate in the study, will they be compensated with the $70 since they're not wearing the device?
Yeah, okay. The study, the primary outcome of the study, the whole endpoint that it's funded for is physical activity. So, physical activity has to be measured and reported in the study. That's the main outcome. So, people will have to, if they, they will need to wear the accelerometer if they want to participate in the study. If they don't want to wear it and don't want to participate, then they don't have to. And I just want to clarify that this, we're recruiting participants in the neighborhoods around the rec centers. It's not, they're not going to be required, if they're participating in a rec center program, that's a separate thing. We're not going to just be saying, oh, you can't participate in a program unless you enroll in this study. So, people can enroll in this study if they want to. They may not even be participating in the rec center programming in their neighborhood, or they might. But the study part of it, they need to be interested in doing that as a separate activity, and we'll be recruiting them to the study. So if they don't want to do an accelerometer, they won't enroll in the study, they won't participate. But it'll be clear to them in the consent process, that we talked about last time, that they, it's a voluntary study, and they'll be explained everything about the device. And we're also doing a survey with the parent, and we have one for the child. So they don't have to do that either if they don't want to. But they can skip survey questions if they don't want to answer some of the survey questions, because the survey isn't the main whole reason for the study. It's collecting additional information. But the accelerometer is the main outcome of the study. So if people enroll in the study, we're going to want them to wear that. But they can decide later that they don't want to wear it, and then that's their choice. So, it's really up to them. But initially, we're going to be enrolling people and wanting them to wear this over the course of two years, at the beginning of the study, and then three other times throughout the two years. So if they enroll, and then they start in the study, and then they say, I don't really want to do this anymore, they don't have to. And then that's the end of it. So it's really up to them. If they want to participate, and then if they want to drop out later, they can do that.
Okay. So you said two years. That's, I'll come back to that question. So you're saying that the participants that you're looking to wear the accelerometer are the young people or families that are not enrolled in a park programming?
They could be, or they might be, or they might not be. We're not, we're not recruiting them because of their participation or nonparticipation in a park program. We're just recruiting them because they live around the neighborhood. So we're going through community organizations, neighborhood associations, other community organizations like YMCA, YWCA. There were partners with us in the grant proposal, churches, whatever organizations in the neighborhood serve that community, and are willing to work with us to invite people to take part in this study.
Okay. And so, the compensation of $70 for the seven days, that's every time they wear it, the four times over the course of two years?
Yes.
Okay. And you will not, your team would not be directly responsible for recruiting? What you would do is leverage the relationships of these said partner organizations to recruit the families in. Is that correct?
Well, it's usually a joint activity. I mean, we are responsible, because we have the staff to do it, and these organizations are busy, so they're not out there recruiting people for us. We just, we ask them to share things in their newsletters. If they have an email newsletter, to put the information there. And if people are interested, they can text us, or email us, or call us. We have a designated contact number, and we have a study website. They can go there. So the organizations are just basically sharing information with their communities and their networks. They don't really do more than that.
All right. I will let someone else ask some questions. I have several more, so I'll come back to them.
Okay, Commissioner Musich, just a reminder, we do have a time certain hearing at 6:30. Go for it.
Thank you, President Forney. I'll be brief. In the updated document we received today, it noted that this is a project to determine the activity level of children and their families. Will adults also be participating in the accelerometer component of the study? So you can see whether or not there is corollary data to parents also becoming more active, as their children do at the same time?
Yes, we're, in order to enroll a child in the study, their parent has to consent and take part also. So we're recruiting and enrolling at least one of the parent or caregivers of the child and the child. So they'll enroll together. They'll both go through a consent process where they explain, the study is explained to them, and both the parent and the child wear the accelerometer around their waist for seven days. And they also are both asked a survey that asks them some questions about park use and their attitudes towards park, what makes it easy, what makes it harder to participate in park programs, those kinds of questions. Kids are eligible for the study if they're between six and 12, but we only ask a child to complete a survey if they're eight or older, just because of their ability to kind of focus and answer the questions. But it's an age-appropriate survey, and both the parent and the child do wear the accelerometer.
Okay, thank you for that information. I just, I always am curious, when we're trying to influence the behavior of children, or understand what influences the behavior of children, what impacts that has on the adults in their lives. So, I'm glad to hear that it's comprehensive in that way as well. Thank you.
Any more questions, people? Oh, Commissioner Bennie?
I have a quick question, and it might have been in the packet materials. I didn't print the whole thing. But what department is this study in, or are you a part of?
This study is being conducted through the Division of Epidemiology and Community Health. That's a, we call them divisions. They're just like departments. It's in the School of Public Health. But our co-investigators, Dr. Barr Anderson is in kinesiology, as she mentioned, and she's a physical activity epidemiologist. And Dr. Fan is in the Humphrey School of Public Policy. She's an urban planner and has worked with the parks before.
Well, and I, thank you for that answer. And that's, I think that's what I was remembering, that it was public health, broad umbrella with this community piece. But I think that why I'm going to support this is that there was, when I was campaigning, some people were interested in the parks taking on kind of responsibility for public health, but I think it's a partnership, you know, that we, you know, we can offer and do, support public health work and studies and learning, and then try to leverage what's learned as we roll out programs for, in this case, kids. So, thank you so much.
Vice President Smith, and we've only got a couple minutes before hearing.
Okay. Again, I'm going back to the document that lists your measures, B6, specifically when it talks about the actograph, it talks about GPS tracking and the location where the physical activity occurs for these families. That is, again, alarming and very concerning to me. And so, I heard that you won't be using it, but it's written in your grant report. So I'm literally confused.
Yeah, yes, President Forney, Vice President Smith. Yes, we are, so Simone was saying how it was in the grant. So the proposal, sometimes we have these ideas of how we're going to do things in the study, and then when it's time to actually do the study, we make the final decisions. And I assure you, we are not doing, we are not using that GPS capabilities for measuring physical activity for this study. It is purely just the activity level and being able to classify, and being able to do the same for the parents and make that comparison. Totally understand and hear, like, that's very concerning, particularly of tracking, unless that's the agreement. But that's not, it's just not one of the aims of the study. aims of the study. We're just on physical activity and not about the proximity and the context of where physical activity is taking place.
I appreciate your answer. I am still very concerned. It is what's written. And in true fashion, it's actually written. And the University of Minnesota has a very dark history in communities of color, and communities that are focused in or placed in areas of high concentrated poverty, one in which there's been just kind of a switch and bait, if you will. And so, I'm just, I'm concerned.
Well, I understand your concern, and I agree with your perspective. And I have no sum about what's happened over the decades of abuse by researchers. I mean, that's, I acknowledge that. I hear what you're saying. I understand your concern and the community's concern. The grant proposal has, when you're writing a grant proposal, you put in a lot of things in there, and then it's an idea, and the reviewers review it, and it gets funded. Then when you have to get down to the super in the weeds, sometimes you don't do things the way that's written, because you either can't, or there's a lot of reasons why it doesn't exactly map on. So, there's a lot of things in there that are going to be done differently than is written in that document. And we, the GPS thing is one of the things that we are not doing. I don't know what else to say to reassure you that we're not doing it, other than to let you know that we aren't doing it, because it's not an aim, as Dr. Barr Anderson said, it's not an aim of the study, and it doesn't really, it's not of interest to us. So, and it's a lot more effort to put that in there for something that we have no interest in. So, we aren't doing that. And if we were going to do it, you can bet it would be in the consent form, but also you can bet people would never participate. I wouldn't. If I was going to be tracked via GPS in any study, whether it was a physical activity study or any study, I would never do that. So, I...
I apologize, but we do have a time certain here. So, we need to recess the full board. I'm sorry, we need, if you guys can sit down, we need to go to another committee, and we'll come back to this after we've done. So, on to the planning committee for their public hearing. Take it away, Commissioner.
Thank you. First, I'd like to call the planning committee to order, noting our two new members. Secretary, could you take the role, please?
Vice President Smith, here. Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Mens?
Here.
President Forney?
Here.
Co-chair Bennie?
Here.
Co-chair Elper?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, let's, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, move.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? The motion passes. I believe we have no minutes. So, I'm going to move right into the public hearing and invite Design Project Manager Andy Schilling, if you'd like to give us a brief presentation, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andy Schilling, Design Project Manager for the Columbia Park Playground Replacement of Removed Equipment Concept Plan Effort. The background and location of this project is, it's, this project is the replacement of playground equipment in the two-to-five age play area in Columbia Park. This playground container was impacted in 2020 by a joint project called the North Columbia Golf Course and Park Stormwater BMPs Project. You can see on this slide that there is a stormwater pipe that went right through the two-to-five age playground container. The equipment that was in there had reached its effective life. So, the replacement was eminent. A little bit of imagery of that particular container. The image on the left was the playground equipment. And the ship theme kind of persists through what I'll be presenting tonight, and I just wanted to show that. On the right-hand side is the restored playground container by the Stormwater BMPs Project. And we swapped out some of the playground surfacing with more of the preferred, from sand to the preferred engineered wood fiber surfacing. Funding for this project comes from the 2022 Capital Improvement Program, MPB20, for $150,000. With some of the engagement, staff time, and other fees and costs, we have about approximately $136,000 for construction and contingency. Timeline for this project, we began to engage the community and began a design development in October of 2021, and proceeded through that process until April this year. Tonight, we have the public hearing and concept approval. With the approval, we'd be able to execute the construction contract in May or June of 2022, and start building, installing the equipment this summer. In terms of community engagement, we, I reached out to, as part of the plan, to the neighborhood group, the Columbia Park Neighborhood Association. We had three neighborhood group meetings, including an open house in December, where we introduced a couple of different concepts for playground equipment, and gathered feedback through that process, as well as surveys, as well as a survey, to really land on a concept plan and preferred concept plan through that process. Also have NPRB staff input, and we reviewed with the neighborhood in February, a preferred concept, which required very minor changes that you'll see tonight with the preferred concept includes those changes. The playground concept that's preferred is a pirate ship themed play element. And it also includes, with some community feedback, toddler swings with a shared parent-child swing, playhouse with a tunnel, a spinner or merry-go-round type setup, as well as sensory and imaginative play features and accessibility features in the project. So, the surfacing for the playground would be a combination of the engineered wood fiber that's in place, as well as pour-in-place rubber features for the accessibility piece, and some of the resiliency in high-use areas. Here are a couple of images of the playground equipment, and the, you can see the pirate theme on the right. It was very popular. We had feedback down to, you know, specific elements within it. It has two steering wheels or helms that was a requirement from the previous one, had that same setup, and was popular. And you can see the tunnel and playhouse area that has sensory elements as well, the spinner and the toddler swings with the parent-child joint swing as well. Another angle of that image. And that is all. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, Vice President Smith?
I do have a question. In the drawing or the design here, is there any way that we can incorporate some accessibility piece for young people who may be chair-bound to access the swings?
Yes. So, actually, that full engineered wood fiber surfacing is ADA accessible. It's a very specific type of wood fiber blend to be able to make that happen. So, those swings would be accessible from a ramp that'll be coming off of one side of the container. The side of the container that they'll be able to access will be on the, near the pirate ship side.
Okay, got it. Awesome. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you. And just, I, we do have one speaker here tonight on this. So, what I'll do is I'm going to invite our speaker to come up. I believe it's Sue Benbank, if I said your name correctly. And then we'll come back, and if there's any further discussion by Commissioners before we, on this item. So, Sue, if you'd like to come up, and let's say...
I don't think I'm going to need to add anything to it. I thought it was kind of a different structured meeting tonight that we'd see a bit more hands-on. But from what I see, it seems like it will serve our neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood. And I guess I would like to see, if I can still add a thought, something musical. There is a park, Jackson Park, off of Central Avenue and 22nd, that has some components to it, since we're doing two-to-five. I don't know if you can still add something like that. But otherwise, it looks like it will meet the needs of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and return to Commissioner comments on this. Any other questions? Yes. Co-chair Bennie?
Just a comment. You have the sensory equipment or the, yeah, experience. I just really appreciate that. And I noticed in another presentation that we had last time or the time before, from another, you know, playground equipment project, that's the case. Is it typical in all playground remodels to add that type of feature?
Yes. That tends to come with kind of the standards that we try to bring to a project, to have not just kind of the physical activity and motor, big motor skills, but also some of the sensory and imaginative play.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further lights, I'm going to ask if there's a motion on this, this item from the committee.
So, moved. Can I move it if I'm a guest?
Yes, please. Please move the whole thing.
I moved the public hearing? No.
No.
Oh, we're moving, it's the next item agenda. Do we have to skip the public hearing?
It's not 6:45 yet.
Okay. So, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-187, Resolution approving the concept plan for Columbia Park Playground Replacement of Removed Equipment.
Second?
A second.
All right. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, the concept, that resolution passes. President Forney, we're four minutes.
You can go ahead and have the presentation.
Wonderful. All right. So, next, I would like to invite Carrie Christensen to the podium. If you could share some background information for us first on Resolution 2022-8, Public Hearing to Consider the Name Bridalvale Gardens for the Towerside Park Site. Please go ahead.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, co-chairs, Commissioners, President Forney. So, tonight, I'm excited to be opening up at long last a public hearing for a new park name in the Towerside site, for the Towerside site, is which the way we've been referring to it over the past few years. So, as you, as you know, the board, the previous board nominated this name, Bridalvale Gardens. Tonight is the first of two public hearings that we'll be holding to hear from community about the name nomination. There is no action required for the board tonight. And then, this summer, the plan is to bring it back to you as a resolution to take action to name the park. So, just to orient everyone to where the park is located, it's in the Prospect Park neighborhood. This graphic shows the Bridalvale sub watershed, which actually empties out into the Mississippi River at Bridalvale Falls. But there's unbeknownst to many of us, a creek flowing under, much of it's a pipe shed. But, so this story is really telling the story of this ecological feature that's really significant to this area. The star represents the location of the park. The park was master planned, is one of the newer parks in our system. It was master planned and is part of the east of the river master plan. This is the Towerside District, as we refer to it. And you can see the park kind of down in the bottom part of the screen, the first, I'd say the first segment or first park in this district. We hope to actually be bringing other park, new parks in this district to you in the next few months. So, stay tuned. And then here's a graphic of the master plan before it was built. So, we actually built this park just not too long ago. And here's what it looks like. Really urban, interesting context, a lot of higher-density housing, but also adjacent to this industrial area. So, there's a picnic shelter adjacent to a watershed, the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization's stormwater facility. And you actually, we get to water the community garden on the site with filtered stormwater. So, it's this really amazing kind of system. All of the buildings surrounding the stormwater park, their roofs flow into the stormwater park, are treated, and then used in our park to water the grass and the garden. There's the very popular, much coveted Towerside Site for now, Community Garden. The site before it was made into a park board park was the Prospect Park Community Garden. So, it was this really kind of community-driven grassroots space for many years, until we took it over. Been working closely with community on this site for years. And just a little more about the context. So, again, it's in the Bridalvale sub watershed. There's lots of names tossed around with this area. So, there, the developer that we purchased the park from had referred to it as the Towerside Signature Green Space. As I mentioned, Prospect Park Community Gardens was the name of the original community garden on the site. Malcolm Yards is how the developer of the area crossed the transitway, refers to the future development area. The Towerside Innovation District is the name of the district. It's a collaboration between lots of agencies. People, sort of the vernacular for the grain silos on the edge of this area is the United Crushers. Green Fourth is the name of the street going next to the park. That was this multi-agency effort. And then from the park board's perspective, in the East of the River Master Plan, we did name the Future Regional Trail that will be, it's basically the Grand Round's missing link connecting from the river up to St. Anthony Parkway, that we are, we've entitled the Bridalvale Regional Trail. And so, this park will be one of the parks along that trail route. There's been lots of engagement, again, many years of conversations about the name, starting with the master plan. So, in 2017 to 19, when we were planning, we also collected name ideas. We shared multiple name options from the master plan with community during the design process for the park, which happened just on the heels of the master plan. Lots of, you know, we had in-person engagements and online survey. We even did some intercept interviews with LRT riders. There's a light rail station right across the street with community gardeners, with students, neighborhood organization. And then we revisited some of the name ideas in 2021, at the direction of the previous board, had conversations with local leadership and garden and park users. So, here's a list of names that were considered for nomination. And the list here represents names that came up multiple times. So, Bridalvale Gardens. And then I'm going to give a little bit of background on why the name didn't move ahead as the primary nomination. So, I'm sort of fast-forwarding along here, which Malcolm Yards was one of the names that came up. But again, it's a developer name for the area that now has a food hall and a future park location. Prospect Park North, since there are other parks in Prospect Park, there was a sense that this might be confusing. Towerside Park, which duplicates the word tower, and maybe confuse with Tower Hill nearby. Mary Alice Cop Park or Garden. Other memorial efforts are underway in the community to memorialize her. A name of significance for Dakota people. There's been communication between Towerside Innovation District and the tribal leadership around this idea, and the site was not determined as a priority for the Dakota community at that time. There was also a few nominations or sort of recommendations to honor the African-American family who lived in the Prospect Park neighborhood in the early 1900s that faced discrimination, the Jackson family. And there are other memorial efforts underway currently in the community for that family as well. And then there was other sort of recommendations, which don't, please don't include the word tower in the name, so it doesn't get confused with Tower Hill, and then please, you know, honor this idea of it being a garden or a park. So, the previous board gave some guidelines for, as we sort of started to winnow or go back out to reengage about the name, since it had been a few years. back out to reengage about the name, since it had been a few years. They directed staff that the name should not have the word tower. The name should relate to a local geographic feature like Bridalvale Creek or Garden. The name should tell an underrepresented story of people or places in the area, and that it should not duplicate other memorial efforts underway in the community. So sort of through that process of elimination, we've landed at Bridalvale Gardens, brought that forward to the last board again, and it was presented as the nomination. And I think this list sort of speaks for itself in terms of the justification for that name. So thank you so much. I think now we'll open it up.
Yes. So what I would like to do this time, I'm a little more prepared than at 6:30 for that public hearing. What I'd like to do is open the public hearing. We have one speaker tonight, and we have three written comments. And if our Secretary Ringold would be so kind as to, when the time comes after our in-person speaker would read aloud the written comments, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have any Commissioner discussion. Okay, so I would like to start by inviting, we have one speaker who signed up, Julia Wallace. If you could come forward, I'd like to invite you to speak. And if you could, just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Three whole minutes, wow, that's more than I thought I would get. My name is Julia Wallace, and I live at 22 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, which is one block from this wonderful little park. I'm here to speak in support of the name Bridalvale Gardens. During the work leading up to the East of the River master plan, I served on the work group, which worked on the regional trail, which will complete, and I said will, not might, will, complete the Grand Round's missing link through Northeast and Southeast Minneapolis. The master plan names this final link, the Bridalvale Trail. As the master plan states, Bridalvale Creek used to be a prominent feature within the area, moving through many wetlands, ponds, and finally over the Bridalvale Falls into the Mississippi River. We in Prospect Park are familiar with the Bridalvale Falls, and we recognize it as a landmark, but many people don't understand that there is a creek that feeds that falls, and there is the watershed. So this will be a learning opportunity. Establishing park names that recognize historic and natural resources is a way not only of honoring those, but of informing people and educating us. So we look forward to that. The Bridalvale name will mark the first new parkland along the Bridalvale Trail. The master plan states in its discussion of this future park at the Towerside Green Space site, there is a potential for common branding of all the public spaces and park features in the Towerside District and Malcolm Yards. That can, we really see that as a way of making connections, which is one of the things that Parks for All talks about, is connecting parks and people, and this will have a trail, connecting a lot of parks. And we hope that having some branding of those parks will improve their access. The inclusion of the word gardens, of course, is especially important to the neighborhood. Before the Park Board even became involved, this site was the home of flourishing community gardens run by the Prospect Park community, made successful by the support of the landlord and the hard work of dedicated neighborhood gardeners, who made it quite a wonderful, kind of funky place that also was used for community gatherings. When the plans were being made for this space to become an official park, there was strong support for including gardens, and that obviously happened. The vegetable and flower gardens in this park are one of its signature features, and the name Bridalvale Gardens is a recognition of this special element of our park. So we can't wait to have this process completed and to see that sign go up this summer that says Bridalvale Gardens. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Secretary Ringold, would you be willing to read aloud the comments that we received?
Yes, I will. Co-Chair Elper. So the first one is from Trina Port. I live a block away from the gardens next to 2904th Street Southeast, and I already, and I really hope that you do not choose the name Bridalvale Gardens for several reasons. It has nothing to do with the wonderful free, fresh produce and flowers that are a big part, big and important part of this garden. There are no Bridalvale plants in it. That's a specific kind of flowering shrub, spirea, and it smells awful, too. Bridalvale is a sexist term, and it has nothing to do with the fact that most of this garden is used for fresh vegetables and cutting flowers. How about a name that is specific to the gifts of our neighborhood, like be happy garden, giving garden, garden of neighborly love, et cetera? Thank you for your work, and I really hope another name is chosen. Next is from Mary Britton. The part of Prospect Park referring, referred to as Bridalvale Falls is nowhere near this park. It will cause confusion. Towerside Park is a good name and relevant. And finally, from Farmer Dell. While the idea of a name honoring the Native American heritage is intriguing, I am fine with Bridalvale Gardens. It ties to the Bridalvale Trail concepts and highlights the fact that there is a food and pollinator gardening emphasis at this site.
Wonderful. Thank you. So with that, I would close the public hearing. And if there are any questions for Carrie or comments, now's the time. Let's go to Commissioner Menz.
I actually had a campaign event at this spot with Julie there, and there was lots of discussion. And the consensus is that it is a nice name to brand the area, and the naming of the trail is important. So as the Commissioner in this district, I'm supportive of this name.
Thank you. Co-Chair Bennie?
Just a quick question. I mean, I know there was Bridalvale Creek. It's all been piped. I think all of it's in a pipe. Or is there still any daylighted remnant of creek? Is there a water body named Bridalvale Creek?
Commissioner Bennie, I believe that their creek is
Gone.
is in the pipes, and then upstream of Cosoda is some relation to it, and then Bridalvale Falls. Sorry? Bridalvale Pond is
Okay.
is a body of water that is upstream.
But there is no more Bridalvale Creek. Right now, it's in a pipe. It could come out of a pipe at some point, but it's currently in a pipe.
Let's see if my colleague Tyler Pedersen has any, do you have any insights? We've been, we've been looking at the Bridalvale Pond for another project, so.
Commissioners, I'm actually mistaken. It's actually Cosoda Pond, but it is, the Bridalvale Creek comes through there, and it is daylighted for about a few hundred feet.
Okay, so it may be a water body. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further lights, I'm going to continue on to our study report item tonight. And then after that, that's our final item for the Planning Committee, and then I believe we'll go back to the full board. I just want to let the researchers in the back know. So I would like to invite Assistant Superintendent Schroeder up and Tyler Pedersen to talk about a property exchange between the University of Minnesota and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. It's Resolution 2022-14.
Thank you, Commissioner Elper, Commissioners. I will give a very brief introduction. I'm going to take you back to the previous board and Resolution 2021-204, which is approved by the previous board on the 19th of May, 2021. And it involves a project at Fraser Hall on the campus of the University of Minnesota on the East Penn campus, where the board approved what we call a letter of agreement that allowed the University of Minnesota to proceed with the planning for the reconstruction of Fraser Hall. As we're going through that process, we noted that there were other encroachments, not just at Fraser Hall, but at Brunex Hall and Appleby Hall, and I believe the ones at Appleby Hall were undocumented encroachments. And as we moved through that process, we realized that with the kinds of improvements that the university was necessarily making to support its buildings, we would never be able to fairly use that land, that part, the current parkland for any other use. It's basically the area between the easterly curb line of East River Road and the buildings. And so we talked through the letter of agreement about an eventual land swap, a land exchange, that would exchange equal amounts of land, finding land that would be better suited for park purposes. So tonight, we're going to go through that process of describing what we believe is a reasonable exchange of land between the University of Minnesota and the Park Board. This is preliminary. It's also being shared with the Board of Regents. And we expect to, if these properties seem to be acceptable to the board, we'll be doing due diligence through more definitive surveys and an environmental review of each site, and then expecting to come back with an actual exchange proposal in probably the fourth quarter of this year or the first quarter of the following year. To give this a timeline, we're actually moving through this fairly quickly. The previous board was quite generous in giving us three years to accomplish this. We're hoping to accomplish this hopefully by the beginning of 2023. I'll note that Andrew Caddick from the University of Minnesota Planning Division is here as well. He's been instrumental in helping us identify properties on the university campus that would be suitable. But Tyler will walk through the proposed lands.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Co-Chairs Bennie and Elper and Commissioners. As Michael just mentioned, I'll be giving a little brief presentation on the land exchange. But first, I'm going to start off at the Grand Rounds, talk a little bit about that, and two sites that will help us build access that's necessary to creating new connections along its missing link. So Michael mentioned the 2021 letter agreement. There's a quote in there that says, "We want to affirm the intent to exchange property in areas where each party has the need to acquire, use, or access the property of the other to accomplish future improvements, including the NPRB's plans to complete the missing links." So these two pieces are very important to us, and I'll go through them in a few moments in a little bit more detail. The university is also doing a little bit more work at Fraser Hall, as Michael had just mentioned. And so we're working through that portion of it, and making sure that they're able to do their work and make it easy on both parties. So the land swaps. So this is a pretty simple acre-for-acre swap, and it's going to benefit both parties. The staff considered many options over the last nine months and recommended the proposed based on the following criteria. We wanted it to align with adopted policies and plans, which it does. We want it to be consistent with previous agreements and extensive staff engagement between the parties, reduce administrative burdens of both parties. And we don't want it to displace existing uses for either party, and we want it to reflect existing conditions and land uses. So the chart on the, or the table on the right-hand side, it kind of funnily equaled both pieces of property. Site A is at .7 acres and B at .28. Both of those are park board properties that would go to the university. And then C and D are university properties that would go to the park board. Here's a kind of a big map of all of them. Basically, the two that would go from the park board to the university are near the East River Parkway. And then C and D are more interior to the university's property area and would go to the park board. And again, those are lined up very nicely with the Grand Round's missing link corridor. So Site A is right in front of Brunex, Appleby, and a little bit of Fraser Hall. Again, it's .7 acres. Currently, right now, there is kind of a pedestrian ramp that takes you from East River Parkway to, I believe it's Pleasant Street. And that is within this area. And then in front of Brunex Hall, there is kind of a seating area and walkway, both publicly accessible. And here's just a few kind of street shots of it. You can see there's a parking lot that'll change a little bit with the Fraser Hall work, and then the pedestrian ramp, and then the kind of the seating area in front of Brunex Hall. So that's Site A. Site B is Harvard Street South, .2 acres, .28 acres. This would go from the park board to the university. It's one of those little random stubs that kind of just ended up in park board hands. It is a pretty basic, normal streetscape. It is not really a park. So we found that was, that would be a good one to swap out. And there's no, there's no planned park for this area in any of our master plans. And here's the site under construction during this photo, but now completed, I believe. It's just a street. And then Site C, that would go from the university to the park board, a nice, relatively wide or wide enough swath of land for a trail to be placed on. This is adjacent to some of their ancillary buildings, not necessarily, you know, classes, I don't believe. There's some fleet services, things like that. And this is kind of a picture of it. So it's basically just a tree boulevard, perfect for a park. And then Site D, the last one here, is over by what might be Bridalvale Gardens that you just learned about. But, so you can see the gardens there on the south side. And the university is allowing us to take some of their land that would be really beneficial to us for crossing and being adjacent to that transitway that would support a trail for Grand Rounds. So it's really great for local connections. There is a proposed plan for the site north of here. So having that connection would be really fantastic, being a park connection. And here's a photo of that now. Currently, it's a pretty basic transitway with a trail on it, and then the park space there as well. Thank you. And myself and Michael and Andrew Caddick are available for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see, I saw Commissioner Menz's light first. Please go ahead.
Tyler, that's really great. I feel like, Julia, I feel like you're winning the lottery today. I mean, more space for the Grand Rounds, too. This is terrific. I just think it really should be commended when, when the, when the planning department does the little things, and it just is so big. So thank you for doing a good job, just finding those spots, finding, digging, and finding those places where we can work on that long-term stuff that will eventually get done.
Thank you. All right, President Forney, I think that's your light.
Thank you, Co-Chair Elper. Yes, totally exciting. So we mentioned that this is a part of the Bridalvale Trail. Is that what it would be possibly named or aligning with? Or is it really more the Grand Rounds? Or, I mean, I'm trying to put it all into context and everything. Oh, wow, look at everybody just leaps. I love it.
Co-Chair Elper and President Forney, we have been, if you recall from the master plan, the East River master plan, it defines preferred route. And we've been working at assembling land for that. And working with the university, we were able to identify pieces of land, particularly from the north up into the university's services facility just off of Como, where it does align with our preferred alignment for the Grand Round's missing link or what might become Bridalvale Regional Trail.
This is so exciting. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Good to see you in park headquarters again. All right, that's all. Woo-hoo. Co-Chair Bennie?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And I know the piece in the Como area, and there are nice trees in there. We heard earlier about trees. If there's any way, then that's a fairly wide street right-of-way in there, that the trees could be retained and any kind of trail facility could be actually on street pavement instead. and any kind of trail facility could be actually on street pavement instead. I'm just putting it out there, you don't have to answer that now, but those are some nice trees along there that I think the university's taken really good care of, so.
Yeah, Co-Chair Bennie, I would agree with you. You know, we don't want to mess too much with the character there. We want to kind of make it plain.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments from Commissioners, I am going to adjourn the Planning Committee meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to reconvene then the, our board meeting. And first of all, I have to apologize. Simone, you catch us at these stops and starts. We're so, apologize for it and everything, but back to the recreation resolution. I believe that Vice President Smith, you might have been, were you finished with your questions? Oh, okay. Did anybody else have any more? You do?
I do.
Oh, okay. Go for it.
Just one. One final question. So that final question is regarding the actometer and what happens if a family who misplaces it? Like, what is the obligation there?
If they misplace it?
What happens if a family loses the meter? What?
Oh, that's just, we just have a lost device. They're not expected to replace it or make any type of payment. We expect to lose some accelerometers. It's kind of part of the data collection process, and so we account for that.
Okay. Commissioner Elper.
Thanks. I'm excited for this work, and I just want to ask, and confirm, I should say, that your research has gone through, I'm sure, rigorous standards to make sure that we're not harming participants, and I see you nodding. And I believe it's through the Institutional Review Board. Is that right, IRB? Okay. Maybe you could just speak briefly to that review. Just, that'd be great.
Every research study that's done at the university, including student research, has to be reviewed and approved by the IRB, which is a committee of people, including community members, to look at the risks and benefits and safety to participants. And they've reviewed it and approved it. In fact, it's considered low risk, so that's what they, the label they put on it was low risk. So, but that review is very thorough, and it's required, and they also follow up. So any changes that we make in the study, including in our recruitment methods, or the payments we make, or any of the process measures, has to be approved beforehand by that review board. We have to submit it. They all review it, and they have to approve it, or we can't do anything differently.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Mens.
I know you mentioned, and it says that there's only two languages. What will be the opportunity for young people or families that don't speak those two languages to participate in the study? And will you have any sort of way to accommodate them?
People who participate in the study must, in order to be eligible, they must speak Spanish or English. Because we have measures, survey measures, and the consent process, we have to be able to communicate with them. They need to be able to participate in the study. So they have to be able to speak in those languages well enough to understand the consent form and complete the survey.
The University of Minnesota is not allowing any sort of translation services, like phone translation?
It costs a lot of money to get things translated into other languages, so we would have to translate all of the surveys, all of the consent forms, all of the, everything. We would love to offer it in different languages because there are groups in the neighborhoods we're working who speak other languages. Typically, what happens is that maybe the child might be able to, or another family member might be able to help the person who doesn't speak English or Spanish complete the measures. But in order to enroll, that's just part of the study. And we're lucky, we're thankful that we could budget in the ability to offer it in Spanish. It's a budget thing, really.
So you're not able to get phone consent with someone who speaks both languages? It has to all be translated into documents, is what you're saying? Because I know that at times I work with families, and not everything is translated into different languages, but we obtain consent from those families for services for their children, even though everything's not completely translated in document form.
Well, one thing that the IRB does is review all of our documents, and we have to follow their procedures. So for consent, we have to have the consent form translated, and we have to have somebody who speaks the language and be able to work with the participant to make sure that they understand what the study's about, so they can decide if they want to participate. It's a written document, and, you know, it takes 20 minutes to go through and walk through that. So it's, I don't know what process you use, but the process that we use is following the IRB, the federal compliance protocols and language.
Study participation, okay. All right. It's a big limitation for me. Thank you.
Do you have any more thing you want to say? Okay, great. Not seeing any more lights and everything, although in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. That motion does carry.
I abstain, too. I don't know if you asked for abstentions.
Oh, okay, abstentions. Okay, thank you. I apologize. Did we catch that, Secretary Ringgold? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to standards and conduct. Who is bringing forward that resolution? Ah, Commissioner Mens.
I'd like to move Resolution 2022-174, Resolution approving that the Board of Commissioners commits to the regular recital of an Indigenous land, people, and nations acknowledgement statement at Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board meetings, and for that statement to evolve based on context, time, and place, and to take action on strategies to create a culture of Indigenous land, people, and nations acknowledgement in NPRB work, procedures, and spaces as supported by Parks for All, the NPRB Comprehensive Plan.
Do you have a second? Okay, we have a second. All right. Any discussion on this matter, or we have an amendment, I believe? This is the full board.
Full board. Oh, okay.
Full board.
Yeah, this is the full board. Okay. All right. Commissioner Musich.
I had submitted an amendment for inclusion in our packet, but now I'm looking at the packet and I don't see it. Am I looking in the wrong place?
Do you have it?
I mean, I have it. It was in my email.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I saw it earlier.
So I would like to propose, no. I will move to amend what is before us, but to include two resolve clauses, and I will read those to you now. Resolve that the Board of Commissioners direct staff to issue a request for proposals to hire a local consultant/advisor to facilitate the board working together in drafting a land acknowledgement statement at Park Headquarters, and to establish a shared understanding of NPRB land acknowledgement practices. Second resolve clause, resolve that an additional budget request for staff, training, and planning resources to support and take action on this work and the strategies outlined in Parks for All shall be drafted and presented to the Board as part of the 2023 budget.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay. So discussion on that amendment. Commissioner Musich?
Oh, I don't have any discussion. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Any questions or concerns, or Commissioner Jafer?
I have just a clarification. If it's drafted and presented as part of the 2023 budget, if we are presented with what that looks like in more specifics, and it feels like it's too much or too involved or some reason, is there, is there another place that we can adjust that or make changes?
Commissioner Musich, do you want to address that?
Sure. I believe it's a question directed to me. And so the amendment is not intended to dictate specifically what the Board will adopt at that time. It's to request that something be brought to us so that we can make a decision at that time. So that's the intention of this. It's defining a little bit more intensely what it is we're trying to do, and then also how we're going to get that done and what it'll cost us. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Elper?
Thank you. If I may add to what Commissioner Musich said, I think it's making sure that this resolution is working towards action, and so that that second resolve clause is, you know, that we're putting, we're working together to make, excuse me, in the first resolve clause, we're working on a landage acknowledgement statement, and then in the second one, we're thinking about how to go beyond and what that might take. We're not, like Commissioner Musich said, we're not dictating what those actions are, but we're, we're, we're working towards action.
We'll put, anybody else? Any discussion on this? I support this, too. I, it's putting our money where our mouth is, so it's really what it comes down to, and I appreciate the amendment. And so all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstentions, I guess I should say, too. Okay, so that motion carries to the resolution. Any discussion to the amended resolution? No. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Wilson?
Just real quick. Yep, this is a start. It's not the end. We got to do big, solid action. I'd love to see something around land. I'm going to keep saying that, returning it, or creating some sort of partnership, or giving duties to a native community. I don't know. Just, we'll think about that as we go through it. But I do really like this. It's a great start. Thanks for bringing this forward and getting it rolling. Commissioner Mens.
Commissioner Mens.
I don't think it was me that got it rolling. I just started reading something. I'd like to ask, Carrie, can you come, can I ask you a question really quick? I'm wondering if we need an amendment for this, but based on the community input today, I'm wondering about communication with tribal councils and ensuring that that happens in a way that's authentic and not superficial. So I don't know if we need an amendment, and maybe I'm asking for the Board's direction here, too. So I have an amendment, but I don't, it might just be part of the process, Carrie, of what staff would do. Resolve that this Board directs staff to ensure any RFP or communication is directly done to the 11 tribal councils via phone conversation or in-person meeting. I don't know if that would be an appropriate amendment, or if it just would be something that your office would do.
Thank you, Chair Mens. Commissioners, my, I just, in quick consult with Director Arbison, I agree that that could be just a direction to staff in terms of how we would move through a process with issuing an RFP, which would be public, part of our public procurement processes, and we'd widely distribute it. The plan was to distribute it to the 11 tribal councils of Minnesota, plus many other, you know, TMP list with the city of Minneapolis, any relevant consultants that, you know, will reach out widely. So, but the, I agree that the community member that shared advice tonight was great direction, and absolutely we'll take that to heart and build that into our process for the RFP distribution. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think an amendment is necessary.
Any other lights? Your light's off. Commissioner Mens? Thank you. I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this. I just want to remind people that there are some very exciting dialogues that are happening around the Friends of the Falls with the, I believe it's 47 tribes, and, you know, how we can possibly align ourselves with that, I think would be wonderful. I also would like us to explore beyond the Indigenous community. We all know that there are others who have been harmed, and I would like us to at least be open to conversations in that regard. So unless there is further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? That motion carries as well. And so, phew, finally, we are then to our annual Lopet Foundation update. And I believe this Claire, hopefully, she's still here. All right.
She's going to start jogging.
Right. Where's the cross-country skis, though, or whatever? So, yes, Deputy Superintendent Ringgold?
Yep.
Tee it up.
President Forni, Commissioners, it's my absolute pleasure to welcome Claire Wilson here today, Executive Director of the Lopet Foundation. This marks the second time she has presented to the Board, but the first time she would have presented to the Board in this composition. She's here tonight primarily to provide an overview of their annual report. This is required by our operating agreement with them. Want to give kudos to, he's not there, but he was there, Michael Schroeder, Assistant Superintendent Schroeder. He is actually one of the authors of all of our agreements with the Lopet Foundation. And we have a lease, we have an operating agreement, we still have a portion of the donation agreement in play. And prior to that, we also had a transition agreement, and he made sure all of those things held together. My role is to be the agreement rep, and we have a team of staff across the organization, planning, asset management, events, park police, everybody who gets involved with that agreement. And at this point, we used to meet monthly, now we're down to quarterly. And then we also meet regularly with Lopet staff. So there's quite a bit that goes into keeping this relationship healthy, and at this time, the Lopet is in complete compliance with everything that we need. So with that, welcome, Claire.
Yay. Now, I'm being harassed by certain members of the audience to be real quick, so I'll be brief. As Jennifer said, we're in compliance, so questions? Or, no, I will be quick. So my name's Claire Wilson. Again, I'm the Executive Director at the Lopet, Lopet Foundation. You can pronounce it however you like. And I think I've actually, like, like W. Superintendent Ringold said, like most of you all, I am new to my seat as well. I've been the Executive Director for a year and some change. And so last time I reported to the Board, I was actually reporting on a fiscal year for which I was not responsible. This year, I'm reporting on a fiscal year for which I am almost entirely responsible. So I'm here to take any of the blame for any parts which are not operating well, and to give all of the kudos to my staff who have weathered COVID, a huge leadership transition, and have continued to work remarkably well with your staff. And I just cannot echo the comments enough about how much cooperation there is between the staff, how grateful we are to your staff who we are working with, with the exception maybe of Shane, but others are wonderful, really genuinely great. And, and, and of course, none of this would be happening without W. Superintendent Ringold, and she has been a wise and caring guide of the agreement and has been super patient with me, and she's just one of my favorite humans. So that said, this is, as she said, our report to you all. And we are, so just to ground us just really quickly, we are talking about fiscal year 20 to '21. So when I mention the winter activities, they are not this past winter, they are the previous winter. So bring ourselves back into the depths of the pandemic, and that is what we are talking about today. And so, again, the agreement and what I'm reporting on today is the part of the Lopet Foundation that is specifically in charge of the trailhead and certain parts of operating Theodore Worth. And so I'm reporting tonight on some of those trailhead-specific activities and programs. So things that the Lopet could not do were they're not a trailhead, such as, you know, collect the revenue from ski passes, or sell ski passes, or conduct ski school, or run the tubing hill, et cetera. So in the winter of 2020- So in the winter of 2020, '21, just like all of you, we saw across the park system just an incredible increase in utilization. So we saw a 32% increase in annual ski passes. So that's not daily ski passes. That's people buying a pass for the entirety of the season. And we served in the summer over 3,000 youth through our programs, clinics, camps, et cetera. So we were at capacity for the majority of the seasons. And we continue to operate. The staff were in, I was in, throughout all of COVID, we were in full operating mode because there was an demand, you know, that we provide solace and refuge, and we met that demand. Of course, the Trailhead itself was closed to the public for the entirety of the winter. So if you drove by the Trailhead, you would see a huge line. And that was a line just waiting for the rentals, waiting to buy ski passes. So we would let a few folks in at a time. And this was the first year that the Lopet fully operated the adventure shop inside of the Trailhead. So we provided all the rentals. We did all of the merchandise, et cetera. And that was wonderful because it allowed us, whereas previously that had been vendors. It allowed us to control the customer service experience. So those customer service folks were our kids. They were youth who've been with us through, you know, sixth grade. And they feel such ownership over the space, and they do an incredible job. And, and I mean, in last, that winter, they rented over 3,100 pairs of skis and sold over 4,000 daily passes. And so that was pretty impressive. And that does not count folks who came to the park to snowshoe and tube and snowboard. I mean, they were managing a lot of traffic, and they were doing a great job. This was the first year of our agreement that Mill Valley, so the food vendor in the Trailhead, was fully operational. They had to do a lot of pivoting because building was closed. But they did window service. There was outdoor Friday night music. And they actually had a very strong winter despite the closure. One thing that was down, and you'll see this in the metrics that I report on, was, of course, the schools were closed. And so we couldn't have school trips. We couldn't have, you know, field trips to the Trailhead, which is typically where we touch a lot of the kids and kind of give them some of the exposure to Theo. So that wasn't happening. But we were able to provide some space for schools in the spring who needed a place to be, to be safe, and have some kids come in who weren't doing very well in the digital environment. So that was a treat. We hosted some classes in the Trailhead, and they got to use Theo as their learning playground, which was great. We do a survey every year that's included in the report. Y'all have that. 89% of users rated their experience as excellent with our winter services. We are responsible for some infrastructure improvements in the park. And, you know, part of that is that now the Trailhead is fully operational and that we provide quality grooming across the system. So as you all know, we groom Columbia, Hiawatha, the Chain of Lakes, so Bide Madaska Isles, Cedar and Brownie. And then we also obviously groom Worth. In the winter of '20, we started grooming an additional path on the lakes for multi-use. And that was hugely popular and very well received. And it is no small feat because to, you know, just to cover that territory once is pretty extensive. So folks were very pleased with that. We've continued to make lighting improvements in the park. We made some improvements to the snowboarding hill. We've lengthened the tow rope. And in past fiscal year, we also began planning for, and this fiscal year executed, more improvements to the snowboarding hill and also began to tackle the challenge of increased instructional area to accommodate more beginners. So that was started, the planning started in '20 to sustain that outburst of growth, and we met it this year. The ongoing challenges, of course, along with you all, we are working on creating an inclusive environment in the Trailhead and assuring that we are responsible for that. Sinage and wayfinding is a big part of feeling welcomed and grounded, and there's still a lot of improvement that needs to happen there. Begin on instructional areas, like I said. And then parking, we're not going to talk about parking. That just is a thing. So this is just a chart to show off the ski pass sales. When we took over in, you know, 2015, 2016 winter operations, this just shows the growth. So in 2021, we sold just under 10,000 annual passes. And I am pleased to report, and I'll just steal my thunder from next year, that, you know, we budgeted this year to see a decrease in that. We just thought for sure we couldn't, you know, continue that level, that the COVID momentum would not continue. And we did sell more ski passes this year. Not a lot more, but we sustained that growth. So I'm very, we should all be very proud of that. Folks are still pursuing outdoor activity at that level. We do have, as Jennifer said, we have some metrics in our agreement to which we are responsible, and we did meet all of those metrics. And you can read through those. There were some that weren't as robust as they have been in the past, again, because we just couldn't get as many kids to the Trailhead. We couldn't transport them. They weren't in school. I would like to say that I'm very excited that we continue to have a lot of use of the mountain bike trail. So I know the, part of the agreement is the operation of the mountain bike trails. And we have seen and continue to see an explosion in mountain biking, as you all know. But it's truly a diverse group of kids who are mountain biking. And, you know, we're never going to totally move the needle on skiing just because of the, you know, the type of sport that it is. But in mountain biking, we are really seeing the kids engaged and loving it. So we are, this year, planning, and last fiscal year started doing the financial planning for a very exciting skills park up on Stadium 18 and a new pump track and just working to continue to make that as exciting for kids as possible. And we also instituted lots of free days. So we just have free Saturday, free Sunday at the Trailhead where folks could come, enjoy any of the activities for free. And we are going to continue that. This is, oh, this is poorly formatted on this slide. But this is just a report on the revenue and expenses related to Trailhead activities. So again, this is not the Lopet overall. This is the portion of the Lopet that's directly responsible for the activities in the operating agreement. And as you can see, well, you can't see there, but in fiscal year 1920, we reported almost a $56,000 loss on those activities. And we are moving in the right direction. This year, we're at a 3,000 loss. And I feel fairly confident that next year, I'll come to you with a positive balance. So we are continuing to control expenses, trying to create new ways to operationalize and create some sustainable economic activity in, through the building so that we can continue to sustain our operations and to sustain the Trailhead. And so we are committed to that, and we are seeing it move in the right direction, and pretty significantly so. So I just want to say that, oh, whoops, I'm a bad driver of this. Lord, oh. That's not, well, it doesn't matter. I was going to talk a little bit about stuff outside of the agreement, but you all know, you can read on the website. We've got lots of things going on, trail kids, events. And we're just continuing to work to make sure that we are reaching as much of the community as possible. And so in that sense, I just wanted to talk about a few things that are, that we're seeing moving forward. And one is that we operate a space on Humboldt and Dowling on the north side. And we have entered into a partnership with the Youth Farm and a partnership with Camden Cycles. And that building is starting to be actively programmed. And we are, we, in partnership with Youth Farm, are constructing a greenhouse on that property. It's one of the few pieces of land that's zoned for urban ag. And so we're going to construct a greenhouse there. And Camden Cycles, which is a northside bike shop, is currently operating out of the storefront there. So we're just continuing to support activity in the neighborhood as best we can. And we are continuing to work to strengthen the park board and Lopet relationship, particularly on thinking about how to continue to dismantle racism in the outdoor space. And so we have been having some great visioning sessions, and we're continuing to do that work with you all. We are planning to host a World Cup in 2024. So planning for that is now underway. And then there's just a lot of attention to infrastructure. We just, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done to assure that we can continue to operate the park at the level of excellence to which we feel we are responsible. So we are going to be doing a lot of fundraising and grant writing and thinking about how to continue to make the right level of infrastructure improvements to the park. And finally, I just wanted to make sure that you all had in front of you what our DEI work is and the way in which we're headed as an organization and a culture. So we are moving in alignment with the Parks for All Plan and assuring that we are doing everything that we can as an organization to confront and dismantle racism, both internally and externally, as we work to bring about a shared passion for the outdoors across Minneapolis. So the staff are instituting a program called Recovery from White Conditioning that's mandated for all of our white staff. We have instituted several strategic equity goals, and we are continually holding ourselves accountable to those goals. And part of bringing them in front of you today is that, you know, we do believe that we have to have our community partners hold us accountable to that as well. And since you are our primary community partners, I wanted you to have this in front of you and to hold us accountable as we hold ourselves accountable to continuing to evolve into an anti-racist organization. Was that fast enough, Shane? I try to talk fast, man.
Awesome.
Any questions?
You could do a roadshow with us. Wonderful. Anyway, Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forney. The activities, winter activities that the Lopet assists us with are not exclusive to Theodore Worth Park. Could you touch upon the other locations as well?
Absolutely, President Forney, Commissioner Musich. So we, we groom, as I said, Columbia, Hiawatha, and the Chain of Lakes. And then we have activities outside of the agreement. So we have programs in some of the Three Bubbers parks. But all of the activities that we are responsible for in terms of our agreement with you all occur at Columbia, Hiawatha, and then the Chain of Lakes.
And the grooming that happens outside of Theodore Worth, is that all done by volunteers?
President Forney, Commissioner Musich, yes, it is primarily done by volunteers. We also have some paid staff who do it as well. But there are a devoted group of volunteers who also do some of the grooming.
Thank you. I don't know if I got this correct, but Commissioner Mens?
Thanks, hey, Claire. I do have a suggestion. So one of my constituents asked about Gross Golf Course and if we could get that groomed. And I'm hearing that there's volunteers, so maybe it's a good, and they've made a good point that it's a flattest course. So it's, it's really accessible for people of the older generation and don't want a lot of hills. And then, second of all, I just think that this is a really good example of where our community partners can actually push us to. So the work that you're doing and how you're working with engaging youth is really incredible. I mean, I've seen it firsthand with my son being on the Northeast Ski Team and the diversity and how many, you're changing the narrative around how outdoor athletics is done. And I think it's a really good lesson for us as we look into the future of like, sometimes we can't always do it as well as others, and we need to create win-win situations for kids. And the Lopet Foundation has been a huge win-win for kids and for the park board.
Thank you, Commissioner Elfer.
Yeah, thanks. First, I'd just like to set the record straight with you all that I didn't ask Claire to put parking, parking, parking down on, on her slide. But I did have just a couple of questions, one of them related to that. But, you know, I've gotten, thank you. I really appreciate the sharing, all, all the work that you've done, not this past winter, but the winter before. It's very exciting to, to see all the things you've accomplished, you and your staff. So I have gotten some questions, and I don't know how to respond to constituents of mine who sometimes compare Minneapolis to St. Paul. And they say, why does it cost money to go skiing in Minneapolis when it's free in St. Paul? And I just, I want to, I'm, I'm sure it's, it's very complex and I, but, you know, people specifically in South Minneapolis who say, hey, I could pay to go to Hiawatha Golf Course to ski, but I, it's free if I go to Highland in St. Paul. So I don't know, I just, it's something, the question, I haven't been able to respond, and I feel like sufficiently to them, other than to say, well, we have higher quality here. But if you have anything you could add to that, that would be great. Maybe later, if not tonight.
I mean, I can't, Commissioner Elfer, thanks for the question. And I actually, I don't, so there, every system has a different fee, right? A different pay-to-play, essentially. And I get this question a lot. And, you know, I'm thinking deeply about our fee structure around ski passes. I mean, it is, it is an incredible investment of time, energy, and money to maintain ski trails. And like Commissioner Mens said, I would love to say, yes, we'll do Gross Point right now. I would love to, I'd love to groom every park in the city. It is very expensive. And so I am very open to thinking about how we start. And we, as a staff, are having a discussion about how we're able to sustain operations and potentially have some kind of sliding scale or some different way of collecting the pass revenue. There's also a lot of folks in Minneapolis who can afford to, to purchase a pass. And, you know, my hope is that, we haven't even tapped most of the folks who, lots of folks either don't realize that a pass is required, especially on the Chain of Lakes. And I certainly have no interest in policing that. But I do have interest in spreading the word that if you love the Lopet and you love what we do, buying a pass helps that. And it supports, you know, the youth who are using the trails and, you know, and genuinely to have the experience of walking out your door and skiing around the cities, that's pretty special.
Absolutely, I, I agree. Thanks for that. I just have a couple other questions, President Forney. Because I'm curious, what's the outlook for natural snow in the future? If you, if you have some thoughts on that, I'm interested.
Well, Commissioner Elfer, the outlook is not awesome. I mean, we're going to have less and less natural snow. And the catch-22 is that it's also not awesome to make snow. I mean, it's not the most environmentally friendly process right now. And we've started, I mean, and that's an understatement, but we have started a committee to look at, are there other ways to sustainably make snow? Are there other ways we can be looking at to do it? But I do believe, I mean, I've heard everything from five to 10 years, we'll be completely dependent on, on artificial snow trails for winter recreation. And so then we just have to think about where our priorities are. I mean, is that, I mean, whoever in the ski community is listening will, you know, end their membership with a Lopet right now. But I mean, I think we have to think transformationally about how we want to confront the climate crisis and what our role in that is. And so I don't, I'm also not a scientist. Are the scientists still here? Where did they go?
Oh, no. They left after, at 7:45, three hours in. Yeah, thanks, thanks for that. I appreciate that. I think, I think it's something that we all should be thinking about in future, you know, what, what we, what we do as we look towards, you know, climate resiliency in the future. I don't have an answer. I just, it's a discussion I want to start. And then last, but certainly, certainly not least about the, about the parking. I, I know, I know, I had written in my notes, I know that parking at the Trailhead is an issue. And lots and lots of use at peak times. And we, there's only one bus that comes every 30 minutes. And I guess I am wondering what sorts of transportation demand management strategies we at the park board can do in partnership with the Lopet Foundation to support, to, to support recreation at this site and how, how these strategies can be incorporated into, I can't read my notes, into the, into the MOU, you know, really to help expand capacity for skiing, for tubing, for other outdoor activities, to not have the number of parking spaces limit the number of people who can visit the park. So just, I want to start that conversation. If you have any thoughts.
Thank you for that. And we are in constant conversation about that. We have, we have thoughts about how to continue to tackle that challenge. And of course, along with the park board, you know, we all have responsibility for how to manage parking in that space and for how to encourage different modes of transit. And it's super frustrating if you're a family and you're coming to tube and like, you've come all that way, and then you can't find a place to park, and then you can't get a tube. And that, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's certainly a challenge that's a high priority for all of us.
Can I follow up, President Forney? Is that something that we could address in a future MOU? Secretary Ringold or Deputy Superintendent? I don't know what, what hat you're wearing right now.
President Forney, Commissioner Elfer, I don't know that we'd have to put it into an MOU. It's something that we're very committed to. There might be some master plan changes. There's probably some additional work the board. I think we've already had some initial conversations on it I think we've already had some initial conversations on it in terms of how we might administer fees in that area for parking as well. So, this is, we will hopefully have our, a new parking analyst on very shortly. And one of the topics, we'll start, see where their skill sets are around this and then contemplate whether we need to bring in some additional consulting services. But it, I don't think it's something that has to be in the MOU. There might be some modifications in terms of dedicated lots, so there might be an amendment. But it's a need that we both have.
Great. Thank you so much. No further questions.
Thank you, President Forney. I just want to make a note, because I was checking the enterprise fund, that parking and golf and ski are all pretty big top moneymakers for us. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for partnering with Amanda Dobbs and Camden Cycles on behalf of District Two and Ward Four and Weber Camden area. We are always desperate for amenities. And when I, I meant to reach out to you, when I found that out earlier this week, I was like, wait, that looks like that Lopet building. And it's Lopet, everybody, it's Lopet. So, I drive past it very often. I drove past it to get here tonight. And so, yeah, I just thank you for that. I very much love the partnership, and I watched that precipitous growth. It is, yes, parking is an issue, but it's great. Sorry, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Quick question. Do you have any breakdown for either daily passes or annual passes, Minneapolis versus regional? I'd just be kind of curious on that number.
Commissioner Schaefer, yes, we can provide that. We haven't always, I believe, starting last year, we did through the new registration system. So, I can provide some geographic data on the passes.
It's just a curiosity, no reasoning for that, but that'd be great. And then I just want to tell you thank you. I really think the way that you have cultivated a strong, committed volunteer group is really part of your success. And as we, as commissioners, start to think about our strategic directions around unifying our volunteer support system within the parks, whether it's indirect, organic, or direct, there's probably a combination of things that you have done with that. If you would be willing, I mean, I, we would love to, or at least I personally would love to use you as a resource for how you have, any intentional ways you have cultivated that. But there is a real sense of community, like, if you're a Lop, you know, Lopet? What did you like? Whoever, you know, if you're a Lopet volunteer, I mean, you have got to be there. I mean, these are the days and, you know, God forbid you're ill or whatever, you know what I mean? So, I think that that's, that comes from the sense of community that people have felt around that organization.
Well, thank you for saying that. Of course, we'd be happy. I mean, there is a long legacy of volunteer, you know, that has not at all contributed to the current Lopet. But I would say that we are currently very committed, and Camden Cycles is an example of this, of spreading those community roots and strengthening them as much as possible. I mean, community is the heart of who and what we are. And co-creating programming with community and volunteer opportunities, we would love to talk about that. And intentionally diversifying our volunteer base.
Not seeing any other lights? Seriously, you could take this on, you got, you got it down. You're doing a marvelous job. Thank you, thank you so much, Claire. First of all, I love it, the fact that it's Theo. That's marvelous. I'm sure that Ted is pleased with the name, whatever. So, so, this is from, oh, whatever, a year ago and everything. Do you have a sense of, have you grown again? Do you feel that there's that capacity for a lot more growth? The ski passes, the restaurant, I mean, they're both fabulous. Do you have a sense?
President Forney, I do. I mean, so, this year, we're really considering this past, like, the year that we're in right now, the baseline year for the Trailhead. And we, because it's the first year now that we're truly open and operational, we're open all winter. And we are, we are doing quite well. I mean, we, like I said, we had budgeted for a decrease, assuming that there would be at least a utilization decrease after the COVID bump, but there was not one. And so, we are feeling like we are in a pretty strong position right now to continue to grow, and we're just being very thoughtful and intentional about what and how that looks. But I want to get this place operating, you know, in the red before we make any major decisions. We have to stabilize, and as you can see in the financials, there's still some building debt that we want to, you know, go ahead and be responsible for and then be intentional about where to grow next. But there's a lot of potential.
Yahoo, fantastic. And the unfortunate thing, I'm not sure to address Commissioner Elfer's, is that we were going to have two stops on LRT and everything going right through. And it's a railway that just kind of doesn't want that type of expansion and everything. And then I have a horrible thing I have to ask you, but I hear it's gotten a nickname, but the bristles from the grooming. Have we found a way to not lose bristles?
So, President Forney, I don't know if Deputy Superintendent wants to weigh in here. The bristles, I'm actually not, the bristles, I believe, come from the equipment that grooms the ice, which are for the ice skating rink. There's, there's no equipment that the Lopet utilizes that leaves a bristle residue.
Okay. Like I say, I-
I've checked under the thing of a bob that does the grooming.
Well, thank you. It's been a concern by people and whatever, the birthday cleanup people on Isles always complain to me. So, I just, you know, need to ask the question, and it looks like we've got maybe an answer over here. Deputy Superintendent Ringo?
Thank you, President Forney. Commissioner Musich, did you have?
I was just gonna, I was trying to tell you not to turn your light off, because I have also gotten this question, and I know you know the answer, so.
Okay. Thank you, President Forney, Commissioner Musich. So, it does have a name, Bristle Gate. And I think actually Assistant Superintendent Barrick knows quite a bit about it as well. But it does come off of the sweeping equipment that we use for ice rinks. So, the reason why I think you find it specifically at Lake of the Isles is, of course, because we have an ice rink there. Now, I know Assistant Superintendent Barrick, with his staff, have worked very hard to develop better methodologies and looked at different types of bristles and different compositions that provide less bristle runoff. I don't know what other word we would-
Residue?
Residue, removals, drops, but it is not the Lopet, so.
I'll take the blame for all the other stuff, but the bristles, none on me.
Sorry, I had to bring it up.
Claire doesn't get that one.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much and everything for answering all these questions very much, unless there's any, I don't see any more lights and everything. Thank you very much for being here so late. You made it before eight o'clock, wow. Anyway, so, we do have another presentation, I believe, right? The 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan. I know we had some tangibles, but they got taken away from us all. Welcome, Director Wiseman and Assistant Superintendent Schroeder.
All right. Good evening, President Forney and Commissioners. And I'm here to begin the presentation of the NPP 20, 2021 Annual Report. And yes, you did have hard copies, which I collected back because we found an error on one of the charts. So, you do have the electronic copy that's attached to the agenda, and I will be sending out a corrected copy, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow that has the correction to that chart. So, I apologize for that. So, our NPP 20 Annual Report, this is the fifth report, and I am excited to talk about the accomplishments that we have made over the first five years of the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan. So, of course, this is in a historic agreement that was made between the City of Minneapolis and the Park and Recreation Board. It provides over $11 million a year for the next 20 years that will be used for park maintenance, rehab, and capital improvements. And of course, we passed our criteria-based system for allocating the capital and rehab park projects through our capital improvement program. So, by the ordinance, we are required to report out to the board and to the city council on the annual report. This report covers the years 2020 and then shows what is planned for 2022. We are also required to report our outcomes on operating costs. NPP 20 is expected to improve efficiencies and costs. It increases maintenance, which will maximize the service life of park assets over time. We're reducing backlog results for larger number of park assets that are consistently available to the public. And then, some costs will result, cost savings will result from investment in energy-efficient materials as the rehabilitations are happening, happening in our park buildings. So, tracking five years of accomplishments. In the first five years of NPP 20, we have completed 15 capital investment projects. We have three investment projects that are planned to be completed in 2022. We have 12 capital investment projects that are in process. We have completed 11 new or renovated play areas, five new or renovated aquatic facilities, including pools, splash pads, and water park improvements. In our rehabilitation investments, we have made 13 recreation centers completed with major repairs and updates, 56 parks where park play equipment has been repaired or replaced, 46 new renovated athletic fields, tennis courts, and basketball courts, 66 parks with concrete path repairs and replacements, and nine completed roof replacements. So, next, we'll get into our operating areas. So, we, we, the original amount was $3 million of property tax money that was used to increase our maintenance and repair practices. And that has grown through our property tax levy increase in 2020 and 2021. It was $3.5 million each year, and we fully expended those amounts. For 2022, that amount is $3.7 million. And if you remember back in our budget retreat, this paid for, and then part of the capital paid for increasing our full-time workforce by about 45 employees throughout our system. So, for maintenance practices, we've, we analyze, evaluate, train, and then evaluate the outcome and fully initiate, initiated new processes and procedures. So, for our measurements, we have our 2021 service level and our target service level. And for each service level, we are meeting or exceeding what our target best-practice service level is, everything except for plumbing and startups and shutdowns as the pandemic has really impacted that area rather than some of the other areas. So, then the other good news is that in our ordinance, our guaranteed minimum amount was $10.5 million. And there is to be an adjustment, an agreed-upon adjustment that is approved by both the city council and the Board of Commissioners. And through negotiations last year and through the 2022 budget process, we were able to adjust our five-year amount based on inflationary factors. And you will see that our guaranteed minimum amount for 2022 to 2026, it's $11.5 million in 2022, and it increases to $13.1 million in 2026. What's important about this is as, as capital construction inflation occurs, in order for us to maintain the NPP 20 program and get through all the parks at least once, it's important that we make these adjustments. So, you'll see those amounts reflected in our CIPs going forward. So, our six-year capital improvement program, you'll see that we break the dollar amount out between the rehab and the capital investment. And you'll see that our capital investment is now able to grow from just under $9 million up to $9.3 million. Rehab is remaining more consistent because, of course, as we are making the major renovations, the rehab money will get to more of a level amount going forward, where previous years we were catching up on a lot of the rehab. I'm going to now turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Schroeder.
Thank you, Julie. So, I'll walk through the rehabilitation and capital programs in a little more detail. The, and these goals are important, as we set them out in the original NPP 20 program, that the rehabilitation projects would be oriented to enhancing park safety, meeting critical codes even as they change over time, and importantly, implementing our significant ADA transition plan. And relative to that, you'll see as we go through some of the, some of the charts, that in the rehabilitation program, we initially directed $800,000 a year for the first five years towards ADA improvements. And we're finding that as we look at the cost of like, retrofitting buildings, particularly restrooms, that that's not enough. So, we're really looking with rehab to find those things that are most significant need of repair and get those addressed until such time, so that they can hold themselves over until we get to the point of being able to affect a capital investment of the project. Julie talked about the process for maintenance. We also have a process for identifying projects under the rehab, where we have now an inventory of nearly all the major park assets, assessing their conditions annually, and then finding a way to prioritize the need based on their condition and other factors that become important in setting themselves up for the rehabilitation program. So, as of the end of 2021, this is the chart from the 2020 projects across the nine rehabilitation categories. They're listed on the left. And you can see where we have been spending dollars, and you can see that in this, in this particular year, we have spent nearly 90% of the, or at least 90% of the dollars that have been allocated. Some of these dollars have carried over with projects, particularly as we look at expensive things like roofs and the HVAC systems that are in buildings. And then you can see the number of projects completed as you move to the right end of this chart. This is the same chart for 2021, so it takes us a little longer to plan and implement. So, you can see that we're not nearly so far along in this one as we look at only 78% of the projects instead of 98% of the projects completed. But still, a significant amount of work being accomplished across all the categories. HVAC is lesser because we overspent in the previous year, and we're setting ourselves up for 2022 work where we start to get that number back to a normal amount. So, this, these numbers are zero in this chart because, as it says in the right-hand, right column, these are numbers as of the 12, the 31st of December of last year. So, we hadn't actually started anything, but it begins to demonstrate the dollars that we're directing toward the rehabilitation categories, each of the nine rehabilitation categories. I will say it's important for us as we move through this that we work, the planning and asset management work really closely together to find the amounts that we expect to need in each one of these categories. So, instead of having each one of these be the same for every single year, we meet and we try to adjust based on what we're finding in the assessments and priorities so that we can best accommodate the work in as many categories as possible. NPP 20 Capital, you're probably more familiar. These are the projects that come before you where you're asked to approve concept plans based on master plans. These are the ones that are based on the equity metrics that Adam and the data team look at each year, and we are allocating funding based on the equity rankings on a rolling basis. So, there are new parks coming through every year. These are the 2020 capital improvements, and you can see the parks listed, the dollar amounts. And it's important to look at this again from the perspective of how we move through a planning project. The year the dollars first become available, we're moving through, through community engagement and some of the design. And usually, we don't get into implementation until well into the second year. So, you'll see that we, in this case, we're 41% of the projects have been, of the budgets been allocated and moved into. You can see the schedule for completing the projects. Some of them- Some of them are waiting until even this year from 2020 to be implemented. If we were to look at this chart from 2019, you would see that number at the bottom, that percentage being very close to 100%. The list from 2020 laid out similarly, where we list the, the park projects and the allocations in each one. And because we are, we were in 2021, moving through the engagement, it's actually 2022, when we start to move some of those projects ahead toward, toward implementation. And then of course, if we look at the, the dollars, the seven and a half million dollars have been allocated in 2022 according to the capital improvement plan, we are really just getting started with the, with the community engagement on these projects. One more holdover with Jordan Park. And I think Julie and I will stand for questions.
I really appreciate this report, and it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of work that has gone into all of these, these projects. And I guess I believe but would like to confirm that has the number of planning staff decreased over the last few years? Or has it stayed static, or has it gone up?
President Forni, Commissioner Alper, I would be glad to answer that question. The number of planning staff has decreased in the last couple of years. There was an increase when NPP 20 first passed, recognizing that we'd have a whole lot more projects to be implementing with the dollars that have become available. But over the last couple of years, we have lost, I think, three or four staff, including staff from design and project management, which are instrumental in advancing these projects.
And are you, so has the workload increased per person then, like with the amount of money that we're dealing with?
President Forni and Commissioner Alper, yes. I mean, we're, we're very busy in planning. And, and probably each one of you have heard me say this as you bring projects to us and say, can't we do this? I'll always say, we'd be very interested in doing that, but we have, this is our obligation. We need to deliver this. And we've been making really good progress on this. I believe we're, if you look at the, the ranking of parks that go from, that count all of our neighborhood parks, I think we're something like through number, park number 56. And if we're able to continue at the pace that we've been on, COVID changed that pace a little bit because we couldn't do the depth of, of community engagement that we would have wanted to during COVID. We did a little bit of shift to take on a little more rehab during that year. But if we're able to continue at this pace, Adam will have a more exact number, but we will finish the NPP 20 cycle the first time through and still be able to get probably to, to some of the, some of the parks more than one time, probably in years 18, 19, and 20. But yes, we are busy, and we are fully obligated. And I'm sure we'll be talking through the year about trying, find ways to keep up better with this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, President Forni. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Schroeder for being here. I have, am I saying that right? Assistant.
I'll just be assistant for now. Otherwise, I have to sit there.
Okay. Let's, I'll take a pause for Thompson here. I would, I am curious about some of the language in this because I'm going to guess I'm not the only commissioner who gets emails about things like the Harriet Ban shell, or resurfacing bike paths, or, you know, cracks somewhere, something, why hasn't this backstop been replaced? When we, when we do things like address critical failures and improve or restore functionality, those are kind of vague. How do we make that litmus to include that criteria? Because I, I do see a lot of, of these funds going to capital projects. We, I mean, we've spent the lion's share of our conversations since we've been, since I've been on this board, a lot, around a lot of those things out of planning. Are, are there things like, like the ban shell? Or do we find like when it talks about critical, you know, oh my gosh, this thing is totally broke down, like let's get on this? Do, how do we address those things in regard to this?
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, one thing I need to make clear from the beginning is NPP 20 only addresses facilities in neighborhood parks. So when you talk about the ban shell, that's in a regional park, and that's a different source of funding. Many of the paths that you would talk about are part of the regional system and not part of the neighborhood park system. We struggled at the beginning to try and identify what the right split is between capital and rehab, knowing that we originally had these additional $8 million, $11 million, $10 and a half million total originally. What would be the approximate correct split? And we have hovered around the one-third, two-thirds ratio of rehabilitation to capital, knowing that what we have is, is a limited capacity. We have, we have extraordinary capacity but limited amount of time in our own staff to be doing rehabilitation projects. And Director Evenson and his staff have been doing an amazing job, particularly in the last, the last couple of years, identifying and programming improvements. And I wish they were, they were here or could share some of the progress they've made in identifying and scheduling things like courts, which has been a constant problem for us is keeping up with them. But I think they're making significant progress in terms of resurfacing courts, which is one of the things that we find happening oftentimes in neighborhood parks, being, being neglected. So we are, we, we continue to look at the split between those and direct as much attention as we can get into what those, what the critical failures are. Initially, critical failures were things like, I think it might have been at, well, it was a recreation center that actually had a failing roof because we had a cracked, cracked beam in a ceiling. That was critical. We had a facility that was in danger of collapsing. We had roof systems that, that were leaking or were, and when we look at the expansiveness of that, actually looking at the whole envelope of buildings. So when we look at those things relative to like a backstop that was failing, the backstop was actually clearly a lower priority because we had buildings that were, had roofs that probably couldn't survive.
So may I ask a follow-up? So, am I on? Oh, thank you. So, okay, recognizing this is neighborhood parks, and there's a resurfaced tennis court that has, I've lived in my house for 12 years, and it has never been redone. I walked out on there today. It was pretty bad, and nobody plays tennis on it. So, so things of that nature. Is, is it, is it incumbent on us to split it? Or, or could there be a year where we just strictly go and we, we go out to all these neighborhood parks, we figure out paint jobs that need to be done, we fix the light bulbs, we resurface the tennis courts, and we say for this year, we're just sidelining capital, whatever, and we're only doing this, and we're going to, all hands on deck, figure out as many things that we can fix in a summer or something like that? Is that possible, or are we, are we supposed to split it in some way?
The President Forni and Commissioner Thompson, we are supposed to split it. The original program was set up to address maintenance, rehabilitation, and capital improvements. We had definitions for each one of those. And certainly we, as I noted, we have shifted the amounts we put into the various categories each year, and we could shift the amount that we split between rehabilitation and capital projects. One of the things that's important is that we're looking carefully at the approved master plans to make certain that we're not going in and repairing or rehabilitating a court in a park that might have that court removed and placed in a different location within the park. So there's a lot of coordination between what exists today and its condition and how, kind of the sequence before that, that asset might be changed in a master plan.
One, one last question out of curiosity, since you mentioned it. Which came first, NPP 20 dollars or some of these master plans?
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, I got here in 2015, and both were underway, but I think the master plans, I don't, I don't want to say for certain because there, there was, under Superintendent Miller, a coordinated effort to drive both forward. And in the time when my predecessor Bruce Chamberlain was in this role, they had been moving forward with service area master plans already. When I came here in 2015, it was the summer of engagement, as we called it, preceding the, the determination of the NPP 20 program. So they, they were largely parallel, and necessarily so. We wouldn't have known what we would be asking for if we couldn't be assessing the parks and their conditions, and also looking forward to what the parks might have to be to serve a community, a change in community.
So one last point of curiosity. I guess I have one more, one more. I have 30 seconds. This is more philosophical for everybody. Per this tennis court by my house, it's never used because it is unusable. But if it were resurfaced five years ago, two years ago, seven years ago, it would be. There is a master plan for the park that I'm thinking of right by my house, and it calls for the removal of that tennis court. But I'm curious, and I've had some engagement with neighbors, that if it were resurfaced, it would be played on, but it's already been removed. So it's just a, just a point of thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, did you want to say anything? Nope, okay, sorry. Commissioner Schaefer, okay.
You had mentioned that it's roughly one-third rehab, two-thirds capital. And you said that that evolves, that number evolves. What are the factors that you take into account, how that number shifts? And, and, you know, it's, it's a rough proportion, but how, how does that shift? And what are the decisions that you make in putting, you know, because you say you have a two-year cycle on the CIP, right? So that means you're not getting to all the 2022 list this year, right? Some are going to cycle in the next year, two years, maybe three years. How do you, how do you pick from that list? And what are your determining factors?
President Forni, Commissioner Schaefer, the question of how did we determine a one-third, two-thirds split? This was at the very beginning of the program. We didn't know. We, we looked, we, we looked at it and made an educated guess. And we've been kind of following that educated guess since, and I think it's, it's largely borne out. And what's important, that when we look at rehabilitation, it's not always projects that are undertaken by asset management. We do contract out some of those improvements. The planning division actually contracts out several rehabilitation, like tennis courts. We've been doing that as well. So, so it's, it's not, the, the definition between what becomes a capital project of planning and a rehabilitation project in asset management isn't so clear. But it is important that you'll find the, the two divisions and the two departments working very closely as we move through a budget period to make certain that we're approximating things correctly. It was really important early on that the asset management division was assessing the condition of, of, of the assets across the system. And I believe with perhaps just a few exceptions, they're through that process. And so now we know what are the highest priority needs in the rehabilitation categories each year. What we don't do is, is schedule those according to like the equity matrix. If something's failing, it's failing. It doesn't matter if it's in a wealthy neighborhood or poor neighborhood. We're going to, if it's failing, we need to find a way to get to it. And so what we, we do is we use that rehabilitation list, and we pick the top priority list and work all the way through until we run out of money for that year. Sometimes we're actually finding ways that we could pull money forward from a, from a succeeding year to be able to go a little bit farther. Sometimes it's necessary for us, if you were to look at the, the synthetic turf category, you'll see that we haven't spent anything, but we know we have a significant project, I think at Stewart Park. What we need to do is build up funds through the cycle before we have enough dollars to be able to address a full replacement of the turf at Stewart Park.
President Forni and Commissioners, I also just want to say and remind Commissioners, or maybe this is the first time you've heard this. When we implemented NPP 20 and we determined how much we needed based on all the assessments we did of all the neighborhood parks, we thought we needed approximately $15 million a year annually to do everything that was needed within, within the neighborhood park system. So we understand that there are needs in our neighborhood park system that we don't have the funding for, even though we got NPP 20.
I just had a, kind of a follow-up question to that. And this is just my, you know, learning curve. You've mentioned the three categories, capital, rehab, and maintenance. And I'm still, you know, the one-third, two-third is capital and rehab. Describe to me again the maintenance, and then how, how that, what that dollar number is, and how that fluctuates.
President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, the maintenance part is actually maintenance and rehab. And that is in our general fund budget and part of the $3 million property tax levy increase that we received. And so there's additional dollars built into our asset management budget, and how they are addressing maybe, since Superintendent Barrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. So the NPP 20 funding for maintenance is primarily staff and some, and materials. And that materials is, includes a rehab kind of budget. The way we're managing it with the new Chris DeRoche as a projects manager, and Kelly, the analyst that we just hired, he had, they have been going through each asset to, you know, as Superintendent Schroeder said, we're assessing each asset, coming up with an estimate. Some of that work that you're seeing is in the trail rehab work, or the trail repair, that approach. Now that, that work was in the regional system, but that same approach where the trails were assessed, they were scored, we identified the highest areas, we put together a contract to the, the highest need areas, and we put together a contract to get that work done. The courts is probably the, a better example in that most of those courts are in neighborhood parks. But again, an assessment was done, we identified which courts needed to be completely reconstructed, which ones could be seal coated or resurfaced. And then we, we go through it using the NPP 20 funding for rehab. And then some of this stuff, when it gets into trades, like drinking fountains and stuff, we'll actually use our own in-house crews to do that repair or that maintenance. So it's, it's an additional funding source. You'll see in some of the strategic directions and the budget questions from last week, there, we'll have a, we'll have a spreadsheet for you next week that you can see some of this work coming out where they've actually identified kind of that gap of, from NPP 20 to what it would truly take to get things into what we call a lifecycle management. So it's, it's also, this is a work in progress, right? And with, with Jeff, the director, Director Evenson taking over asset, asset management about two years ago, the addition of Chris, we're really starting to get our sea legs and build off of some of the work that was done before, but then get it into a shape where you're going to start to see results.
And so, and this is just high level. So basically, maintenance and rehab are together. So you're one-third, maintenance, rehab together, one-third, but you're more this...
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, maintenance, rehab, one-third capital.
Okay. All right, I missed that from the beginning. I thought I had flipped. Okay.
So, so when we look at the amounts that Julie was talking about that are increasing to $11 and a half million this year, one-third of that is for rehabilitation, two-thirds is for capital. And then there's additional allocation that goes towards, towards maintenance. It's the $3 million that's now 3.7 million.
That's in the gentleman's. You better say that one more time for everybody.
Okay. Capital and rehab, start there. We have $11 and a half million, roughly split, one-third rehab, two-thirds capital. And beyond that, there is maintenance, just the core maintenance. And it's the one that Julie highlighted as being more frequent mowing, more frequent cleanings of buildings. That's an additional $3.7 million in 2022.
The maintenance is, is property tax dollars. So that's in our general fund current service level budget. That is built in to that. And then the one-third, two-third split is shown on this chart, and this is our CIP, our six-year CIP program. So this is the bonding amounts.
So maintenance is completely general budget?
Yes.
So why do we call it NPP 20? I, no, I'm just asking that question.
It was part of the ordinance?
Yeah, if I could, there's an ordinance on this for, if you want to go deeper, PB 16. And there were a couple of issues at the time. One was a capital need, one was an operational need. And the operational need was just the trees weren't getting trimmed, the grass wasn't getting mowed. There were, you see this later in the report, we just didn't have enough staff to do the basic stuff that you needed to do. And so the original ordinance increased the levy by $3 million in 2016. That raised the base thing, your general fund. And so that's increased every year. That's why it's now 3.7, because you've had a multiplier effect in all the levies. So it's raised up. And so that's really just a catch-up. But it was part of the ordinance that passed as an operating fund piece. The next piece then was the city had been providing, I believe it was $3 million annually in capital improvements that frequently would just be used for things like fixing the HVAC. I mean, just barely enough to do anything, but just keep the lights on and the roofs from leaking. And that didn't even keep the roofs from leaking. And the city then added another 8.5 million in, in capital of some sort, in, in terms of, there's two terms in the ordinance. One is for capital projects, and the other is for rehabilitation projects. So there's a distinction there. And sometimes you could say, are they, they're a distinction without a difference. So there's, capital projects was generally viewed as something new, and rehabilitation projects would be things that were to fix existing buildings, to fix them back up. That was the 11.5 million that's, well, or was it 10-point? It's on this chart, and that's what's been adjusted in 2022. That's now 11.5 million in terms of those. And as far as deciding how to do it, I think Mr. Schroeder described that, at the same time there was a need for the, the money, there was also a planning that was going on in terms of where you would do it. Conditions of buildings were ranked, or properties are assessed on courts, on neighborhood centers, on trails or pathways, lighting fixtures in parks, a whole gamut of things that were analyzed about how you'd spend the money. And then, I guess, based on all the needs, there was an allocation based on the staff and where you, given the, the amount of money you had, where those dollars would flow to. Ultimately, I think it's the board's decision about how to allocate the money. But I think it's fair to say that all the staff analysis that went in that demonstrated the need to the City Council, that hey, you've got this huge system and it's being under-invested in a number of areas, you kind of added up as Director Wiseman said, we'd originally asked for 15 million and got less. And so the need was 15. And so how did you, how do you assess it? So really, I think you're right, Commissioner Schaefer, the, the 3 million is in the NPP ordinance, but that's in your base budget now. And it's added the 40 or so people, I think, that were mentioned.
Does that increase, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Council Rice, does that increase like the rehab and capital investment is increasing from 2022 to 2026?
Yeah, no. That, that was a separate adjustment in the ordinance. After five years, we were allowed to adjust the base amounts that were in the ordinance. And there, Superintendent Bangora, I think, talked about it in this board or last year about how we were able to negotiate a, the city didn't want to give us anything, and we got a pretty substantial increase, I think. So there, I know there's a lot here to unpack.
Yeah. Can you tell me the ordinance number one more time?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, what was the term? A concurrent ordinance. The city has one, and I forget that number, but it's PB 16-1 to 16-4.
It's also an attachment in the NPP 20 annual report.
Okay.
It's one of the attachments.
Thank you.
You can look it up on the thing. I got a, I've got a copy here if you want it. But so, yeah, that you'd have to, a little, but the history's important about why it's there. And it's a concurrent ordinance that we've got with the city. So all the parameters that we're talking, that's why there are these reports, that every year you have to report, and you have to project ahead six years and submit to the city, and they have a right to review it. Because in, in essence, it's a, you know, a joint agreement between the city and the park board. So maintaining fidelity to the purposes of the ordinance are important. But again, it's like you'll have all these assessments of all the needs of all the parks and where they are. There's an equity matrix that all of these things are looked through in terms of which parks are prioritized and stuff. We could probably spend a day on it.
Yeah.
And it's getting close to the next day, and I tend to talk too much, as the President reminds me frequently.
And I just have one more question. And I know I'm watching my time, but there's, my questions have been short, but the answers have been long. Maintenance, rehab, two-thirds, capital, one-third, right?
Nope.
Well, okay, it's the other way then. Yep.
Take, take maintenance out of it. And because that is, as, as Adam was pointing out, maintenance is not bonded. So we look at the bonded amount, which is the way the city's been doing it.
Right.
One-third for rehabilitation, two-thirds for capital, or about that.
And then I, I think that's why a lot of the rehab projects tend to look like capital, right? I mean, the nature of it. So then I think this is where the maintenance issue is kind of, where people are squawking about it, I think, is because rehab, you know, is could be just replacing the playground, maybe, right? But it's a new playground, or would that be capital?
In, in most cases, they're capital projects. But I think you're describing it accurate. When, i-if we look at, like redoing a bathroom in a building that's under the ADA kind of rubric, we're also probably replacing front doors and making other significant improvements that make significant, make the building look like it's been significantly improved. But that is a rehabilitation project.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Menz?
Thank you, President Forney. So basically, we do, if I'm doing the math right, that means we, there is 15 million because the extra 3.5 or 3.7, right? Like, if we look at 11.5 plus 3.7, that's 15.2.
Originally, and I think the numbers, the, I, I don't want to confuse things, but I think the original numbers were $2.5 million for capital levy, increased by $8 million. When we were looking, and that gives us, gets us to $10.5 million in the first year of the program, when we were looking for something closer to 15. The maintenance was outside of that. The increase in maintenance was trying to get to those assets, as, as, as Council Rice was suggesting, pruning trees, mowing grass, cleaning buildings, doing those things more frequently.
But we needed 15 million for capital and for rehab.
Correct.
And then the maintenance is outside. And is that our, and then the next question I have, which pertains to what Commissioner Thompson mentioned earlier, is these stagnant sort of entities or amenities that we have in our park that we know we're going to remove? So do we, and I'm assuming that we wait until we're going to replace it, to remove it? But I'm wondering if that's, if it's possible to start maybe removing those things, since we know it's not going to be there in the master plan, and it's not being used, to show that we're doing, I mean, we, there's a few in our district, too. I mean, the Beltrami baseball field or the tennis court. Like, they sit there stagnant, even though we're not going to replace them. How would that, can we negotiate that in this? Do we have to wait until we're going to replace it?
So, President Forney, Commissioner Menz, I, I think a suggestion that, that Council Rice made is, is maybe important to you, in that you have the ability to adjust the amounts every year. But when, let's just take the notion of a tennis court that is going to be replaced in a master plan sometime during the life of this 20-year program. The rehabilitation funds are intended to allow that facility to be perpetuated in its place until such time as the capital project takes, takes over and actually does the replacement. We, we're at a significant deficit and still trying to catch up on many of these things. And I think that's what Assistant Superintendent Barrick was characterizing, the work of the Asset Management Division. Even just finding out the status and condition of all the facilities, the assets we have in our system has been a huge task. And we're finally catching up on that. The Director Evenson and his staff has done an amazing job of catching up and finally being able to better predict how much work we need to get to every year. But the intention of the rehab funds has, was always to allow the assets to exist, to remain in place and serviceable until we get to a capital project, knowing that every park in the system would be addressed by a capital project during the 20-year lifespan of the program. We're not there yet. We're still behind on rehabilitation projects. But we're, but I think the, the work that Director Evenson has been programming just in the last couple of years has been significant in helping us define the path to catching up.
Okay, Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Forney. I'm glad that question just got asked. Thank you, Commissioner Menz. It's something that I always used to ask as well. And I think it's an important thing to understand. That if we, if we were to start spending money on removing things instead of rehab, we would not ever get to a place where the rehab stuff was happening. And that, that's very troublesome to a lot of people. Another thing that I think it's very important for us to just remember is this only addresses our neighborhood parks. We don't have a strategy that's similar in nature for our regional parks. And our regional parks are, are what a lot of us hear a lot about, right? Bicycle trails that don't, that are sucky, walking trails that are not great, things that are collapsing into our water bodies, things that flood. A lot of that stuff exists in our regional system, and we don't have a plan, and we need one. So, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify, the point I was trying to make, and I appreciate the direction Commissioner Menz took it, of removing things. What I was trying to pose is, is the, is the tail wagging the dog a little bit. I'll just use tennis courts as an example. The tennis court was, the, what I'm thinking of is specific, but there are many in our system. And there's many other things, not tennis courts, that are in this category, but I'm just using this as an example. The tennis court is not being used because it is cracked, destroyed, sits there, right? Because it's not being used, it did not get included in the master plan because it was seen as the community doesn't play tennis, or the community doesn't use the court. It's unusable. It's like trying to play pool on a cracked pool table, right? It, it affects the game. So if the, if the court is all cracked and nasty, you can't play, right? Sorry, I'm, the, the point is, is just like, do, does that mean we need to revisit certain things and not put it into a capital project and, and see what would spring to life if we just fixed those amenities? That's, was my point. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Council Rice.
I'm glad you're having this discussion, but it took, Superintendent Mary Merrill Anderson in 2000 had negotiated a, a, basically an earlier version of NPP 20 with Mayor Sales Belton to fix these assets. And within two years, within a year, there was the dot-com burst, RT Ryback got elected, and that was wiped out. A deal for $3 million was gone. And the park board then, over the next decade, lost 100 employees through the city budgeting process. And so, yes, in, in that period then, things wore out. There was no capital budget for the park board to run on. Things turned to be threadbare. There was this huge system. And, you know, John Gerben tried, wasn't successful. Jane Miller, much to her credit, put a ton of effort into this project, rebuilt relationships with the City Council. Mayor Hodges worked on it. Barb Johnson carried it. Lisa Goodman carried it. There were, you know, eventually Mayor Hodges came around and signed it. But it wasn't at the 15 million that was needed. It was at 10 and 1/2. The $3 million that was put in the operating budget was, only restored 40 of those 100 lost positions. So I know everybody wants to say, let's do more and do it. But if you, but for this program, you might be talking about which parks are going to just turn the lights off on. And, and it is an expensive system. It needs to be maintained. There's a lot of competing needs. There's a, certainly a, I wouldn't say an unending need for funds, but there's a critical need for funds, and, and you need to find them wherever you can get them. And I'm sorry I missed last week because I know Commissioner Benny had some good ideas. I've heard some other good ones. There's always this effort. Why, it's why we went to the legislature for a decade to get the legacy amendment. I mean, I appreciate what Commissioner Musich is saying, but if this board hadn't gone to the legislature, take $5 million out of your budget for the regional park system. And if you don't like the trails that are falling apart now, see where that would have been the last 15 years and what shape the system would be in. Or the park dedication fee amount, which adds up to 25 or 30 million. Now that you, if you look at the report, you'll see a lot of these neighborhood projects benefited by park dedication fees, too. So it's a, anyway, sorry for, I'm done.
President Forney, I know there are other questions, but I do want, and, and I appreciate the philosophical question, Commissioner Thompson. But I want to remind all of you that we are five years into the program, and we've spent nearly, probably more than $60 million in our neighborhood parks, which is significant. And if you look at even what's up here, we'll spend more than $60 million in the next five-year sequence. And, and to, to Council Rice's point, we were on a spiral downward quickly. Things were not getting better. And when things start to fail, they fail even more quickly. We're clearly moving in a different direction. And I know there are things we're not getting to. But when you look at the possibility of even finishing the 20-year program, getting through every park before the end of the 20-year period, and beginning to invest in some parks twice according to equity metrics, the, the, the work that the, that staff and the board have done together to improve neighborhood parks in the system has been amazing in the first five years. And, and frankly, I think we're just getting better at it.
Commissioner Benny?
Just a quick thing. But what, what this looks like to me is, you've systematized all of this. And the staff and leadership of the current Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board wasn't handed, here's our asset management, and here's all of our condition assessments, and the level of service and all of that. You guys have started from scratch. And that's something that is, you know, an older business model for public assets. So this will just take some time as things get queued up to jump on the conveyor belt and go through the process in a, in an orderly fashion and with what can be afforded. And, you know, things like the equity piece of this are great and huge. And that, that's a way for us to kind of calibrate our work as we go. So I, I don't know. I think this is, this is pretty exciting. And I, I think this shows that this has been a worthwhile investment from all partners in the city that put money into this program. So that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any more lights. I, I think this conversation is incredibly important, particularly considering we have another budget meeting, retreat, whatever, next week. I don't know that there's much more I can say. But I, I think Council Rice is kind of nailing it, that there's never enough funding. But this was a huge, huge, huge lift. And as you said, historically, you know, there were some stops and starts to it all. And I, you know, I think Assistant Superintendent Schroeder is saying that, you know, we, we're, we're getting smooth now. And so I'm really excited, and I appreciate the report. And with that, I will move then to petitions and communications. I think I started this in, so I'm going to start with Commissioner Thompson.
I would just like to say one thing, and this is sort of a general note, since I have four seconds. I don't want to be too synchophantic up here, but I just want to tell all my fellow commissioners how much I appreciate them. For our MPD discussion and other ones that we've had up here, the amount of thought that everyone brings to the table really genuinely deeply means something to me. Whether we agree or not, I think that we, as a board, we have a heart that is different than some things that have been in our city in the last few years. And so I just wanted to take a moment to say how much I appreciate everyone in this room and everyone on this board. And I feel like I'm better every week. I have to come to the table prepared, and you make me better. So I just wanted to say that. And I won't be too, like I said, too synchophantic, but that's, that's, that's it from the North Side right now.
I would just like to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work on bringing this Bidet McCoska Refectory to the table. And thank you for my fellow commissioners for supporting this project and moving it forward. It's exciting to think next July we'll be able to sit there and have a sandwich or relax at relax at the lake again. So, that's really, I'm really excited, in light of even this discussion that we've just had. We're very appreciative. I've had a busy last couple of weeks. I'll get to the emails and phone calls, and I know you all feel that same way, too, but I had about seven committee, community meetings this week, and all very good. And I appreciate all the input, and I think we're moving forward on a lot of things. And I just want to remind everyone real quickly that it is spring migration season for the birds, so we're seeing a lot of activity and species that you may not normally see year-round in our city. And I'm kind of what you might call like a developing birder, but I have recognized a wood duck, and I have recognized the loon, so I'm feeling really good about that. But I do want to, because I like to putz around with writing. I was in Loring Park this afternoon for 10 minutes, and there was, there was like a mob watching this great blue heron. And that's my other third one that I know. But I just want to write just this couple of sentences about this, because I think this is what grounds us as commissioners and inspires us. I know in lots of different ways, but this was kind of neat to see. There was about four of us watching her, I think. She would lower her head, extend and twist her long neck, tilting her eye next to the water, watching, absolutely still. Then unexpectedly, she would jab the water with her beak, stabbing at the minnows. And from the bridge, the four of us were watching, you could look down and see the schools of minnow, you know, like she'd be right there in the middle, and there'd be like a U shape, and the minute she would go, they would just scatter. And you could see this from the bridge in the park. So, anyways, get out in our parks and enjoy the season. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
So, I saw that we are now below Cincinnati as far as our parks go. What the heck? We can do better. I know we're, I know, you know, the rankings, we can quibble, but just saw that.
Commissioner Musick. Thank you. I think the park rankings have a lot to do with data analytics, and we can talk more about that at a later date. I too have been enjoying the birds. I'm very thankful to the Minnesota DNR for a tool that they have put out, that's a poster of birds that are commonly seen passing through our state, and it's got pictures of all the birds, and you can click on them, and it'll play their song. So, you can also use that to help you with identification. I'm happy to send that to all of you, or share it on Facebook so that you can find it there, because I don't know if it's breaking open, meaning a lot of email it to you. So, I might do that. I'll share it on Facebook, and you can find it there. It's a great tool. It's very helpful. It works on phones, which is also fantastic, because when you're out in nature, sometimes that stuff doesn't work. It's more intense. This is very, very user-friendly. Other than that, it's been very nice to see that it's getting warm, and so many more people are out and about. And yes, that is generating a lot of emails to probably every single one of us. So, it's also, I think, a helpful reminder that when you're replying to people with inquiries about maintenance and garbage and all the things that we hear from people about, you can share the info email with them as well, so that when they have those inquiries in the future, you've given them the ability to not only get that fish, but procure it for themselves as well. Yeah, so, that's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Menz.
Thank you. A couple of things. So, if we're talking about NPP 20, I'm just going to say hashtag Carol Becker, because she was really instrumental in that, and I don't think that we mentioned her. And if you ever need any history on that, call Carol Becker up, and she'll provide you with a lot of it. For the bird lovers, I'd like to say that at Weisman Art Center, one of my constituents, Gudrun Locke, has done a study of the nature of Shorum Yards, which I don't know if you all know what that place is, but it's connected to Parkland Dog Park, actually. And she's done a study on the bird species that are there. And if you go to the Weisman and you see the, she's done an incredible job of just exhibiting what degraded land could become. It sort of pushed my thinking a little bit on what we could do and how we could examine what parkland could be acquired. Also, I'm extremely happy that this board unanimously supported moving forward with land acknowledgement. One person who's been really instrumental in me bringing that forward was a student that I met this year named Kaylee, and she won a scholarship. And I just, you know, sometimes we think about our constituents as adults who vote, and for me, a lot of the people who push me are young people who are of age, who bring a lot of perspective that sometimes us adults just forget about. The MPD discussion was also another place where I accessed student and young people who are impacted by these decisions. So, another, a student who works here for the youth design team, her name's Ray. So, in Northeast, I've spent a lot of time at baseball and softball fields lately, and I'd just really like to thank the park staff for making sure that we have some of the best fields in the city. But I will say that I have received a lot of communication, and one of the things that we can do better is communicate when those fields are closed. And it doesn't take much. We just have to post it. Because when we close fields late, we impact families large-scale. And I think that that's one thing that I'd like to push us to do, is to think about how those decisions impact families or get kids out of school when the field is closed when we know about it. So, those things have been big in my inbox as a commissioner in Northeast Minneapolis, who also is at baseball fields quite a bit. But the fields have been great when they're there, but if we have a field that is closed and 80 people end up there, and 40 of them are students who had to leave early, and we knew the field was closed at 8:00, we have to do better on communication about that for everyone. Thanks.
Commissioner Olson.
So, I would just like to echo what Becca said, and I feel like I want to use your first names in this, but it's always so formal up here, but I really appreciate that sentiment. And I want to say it's been so great to collaborate with some of you these past couple of weeks with Stephanie on Minnehaha Dog Park. I'm excited to move that forward. And with Alicia on Corcoran Park, I'm excited about the future of that. And then work with Tom, thinking about our parkways. And Elizabeth, you mentioned Loring Park, and it just made me think about our Minneapolis Public School connection, and that Emerson is right nearby, and can we get, you know, how do we, love to think more about that with you specifically, with Loring Park and Emerson School. Thanks.
Commissioner Bennie.
Just a quick comment. I often take a stroll that takes me through the rose garden, and this was the first time I went through last night. And it looks like the staff or the gardeners, but also I know there's a lot of volunteers had unmulched, I don't know if there's another term for that, the roses. And it's a lot of work, I think, that goes on there. And at some point, it might be nice to hear what the volunteer groups do at the rose garden. But I saw a scene that's just, every time I go in there, and I go in there multiple times a week in the, you know, summer months, families in there from all types of backgrounds in our city taking photographs, usually dressed way up, too. And there we were last night, same thing, which was great. The other comment is both of the fountains were unboxed, not on yet, which is fine. It's still been cold. But it's just really nice, as everybody's saying, to see our summer looming, so, thank you.
Vice President Smith.
I'd just like to just kind of reiterate in advance, thank you for the staff who will be out this summer, and to our park police as we gear up for, unfortunately, what looks like a really violent summer here in Minneapolis. We had a shooting yesterday at Corcoran Park in the middle of the afternoon while young people were there. And so, it just, it's a reminder that things are happening across our city, and the parks will be instrumental into helping to keep those young people active and have a productive way to let out their energy, and just to be engaged and potentially safe, but also thinking about the safety of the staff as they experience this stuff on a daily basis. And that's something that concerns me as I hear from people who work for our parks feeling like they're suffering, and they have no other alternative for work because they want to stay committed to the work that they do, but how do we keep them safe? And so, thanking them in advance and encouraging us all to think creatively at how we address the violence not only happening in our parks, but just across our city, in proximity to our parks. And so, how do we help people not feel continuously traumatized by the violence happening around us? And how do we all take ownership as a community and create a village mentality for caring for one another? And so, that's what I was stressed. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. In spite of our long conversation about NPP 20 and rehab and stuff like that, I didn't get an opportunity to go out walking today, whatever, but I do believe that the trail around Bede Makaska on the west side is completed, and it's like, hurrah! I don't know how many people realize that one of the reasons why we haven't been able to attend to that is because asphalt was not available. So, anyway, I just want you to know that things are happening out there, slow but sure. And speaking of being outside and enjoying it all, I took a group of friends of mine to one of our nature walks with one of our environmentalists, Mel, down here at Waterworks, and encouraged people to do that, although I believe that they are blocked between now and the end of May. I'm amazed that nobody else said anything, but we had Arbor Day, and hurrah! I mean, my goodness. It just floors me every year. I mean, Ralph and Phil, you just pull it out every time. This one was so unique in the sense that it was an urban street. You know, there weren't trees, you know? We here dug the hole, and we, excuse me, no, we filled the hole, filled the hole, excuse me. Anyway, no, we didn't dig it. Anyway, anyway, it just, I marvel at, you know, how good. I mean, I need you all to know, I don't know how many people know who Don Willoughby is, but when Don Willoughby actually sends an email and says, "Thank you," you know you've done good. So, hurrah on, once again, being terribly creative and everything. And then lastly, I thought we had a fabulous budget retreat last week, and I look forward to our next one next week. And to address the comment that Commissioner Olson said about the trust, the trust, I do believe, changed up the matrix, and I am hoping that we will have a report from staff about, you know, how does that impact us? Will we ever be first again? I mean, what they're doing is they're challenging not just us, but all systems throughout the nation and everything. And so, we, you know, set a standard, whatever, and other people are rising to it. So, it's an exciting thing. But their matrix is new and different, and I just hope that we will be able to learn from that and realize that, no, we've done good, and we've set a really great standard, and we'll continue to do so. With that, I am declaring the meeting adjourned and move on to admin and finance here at 9:02.
I will call the admin and finance committee to order here at 9:02. Secretary Ringel, can you take the role?
Vice President Smith, here. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson.
Here.
Co-Chair Schaefer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
May I have a committee member move the agenda?
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I have a committee member please approve the minutes for April 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the admin finance committee meetings of April 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. We will move on to our action items for this evening, of which there are six. May I have a committee member please move our first resolution?
I would like to move Resolution 2022-168, Resolution approving an agreement with JLD Group LLP for five operating seasons beginning June 1st, 2022, and expiring December 31st, 2026 for Theodore Wirth and Hiawatha Golf Club.
Is there any questions around this? Commissioner Olson? And tonight, we have Director Umfree here. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, so I saw that as far as choosing what gets served, and typically it happens in March the year before, is that still going to come before us? Or is that not something that comes before? I thought I saw that in the packet.
Chair Thompson, Schaefer, Olson, and Mel, we require...
A menu to review a staff?
Okay, so staff.
The staff reviews it. Yeah, just to make sure that the concept is what was proposed on the RFP. So, for example, just use this, you serve seafood, and next, all of a sudden, you serve steak. It's like, whoa, wait a minute, this is what you said. So, that's why we just review all menus for all concessions.
Okay, yeah, totally fair. Cool. Thanks.
Any further questions? All right. All those in favor of moving and passing Resolution 2022-168, please say aye. Aye. May I have a committee member please move Resolution 2022-170?
I'll move it. I propose to move Resolution 2022-170, Resolution approving a concession agreement with GC Ventures to provide food and beverage concession services at Columbia Golf Course and Gross National Golf Club.
Thank you very much, Vice President Smith. Any questions on this resolution? All those in favor of passing Resolution 2022-170, please say aye. Aye. Great. Got two down. The next resolution, does someone please bring it forward?
Bringing forth Resolution 2022-186, Resolution approving agreement with Mississippi Park Connection for Installation, Operation, and Maintenance of Paddle Share Stations at North Mississippi Regional Park, Boom Island located within the Central Mississippi Rear Front Regional Park, Greco Park within Above the Falls Regional Park, and Mississippi George Regional Park.
Thank you very much. This is an exciting program. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor of passing Resolution 2022-186, please say aye. Aye. Next resolution, please.
I'll move Resolution 2022-188, Resolution approving a three-year lease agreement with the Minnesota School of Botanical Art for Space in the Longfellow House to expire on December 31st, 2024.
Thank you very much. And we have Director Olson, who has been waiting patiently this evening. There's a little bit of discrepancy between the resolution and the contract, and we've been working through this this week, but if Director Olson can give us kind of where we're headed with that discrepancy, and then maybe Council Rice, you can direct us if we can just vote on it, or if we have to have an amendment next week, what the procedural steps are.
Good evening, Commissioners. Co-Chair Schaefer, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to speak about the Botanical School of Art and their lease at the Longfellow House. The discrepancy that was mentioned is about the rent. I have been doing some version control, and I think that I merged a few different versions together. So, my resolution within the background materials includes information about how much rent will be charged, and it is, there's some inconsistency within the lease document. However, it is not in the resolution language. So, I would propose that I bring forward a lease next meeting, if you were to pass this, that would be consistent with the background language. It would not change the written resolution here approving a three-year lease agreement with the Minnesota School of Botanical Art for Space in the Longfellow House to expire on December 31st, 2024. The lease is based on 15% of class revenue and a monthly installment. So, when I wrote up the background materials, I wrote it one way, and it conflicts with what I wrote in the lease agreement. So, one that supplements and one that is on top of. So, I would want to go back and make sure that those were trued up. That's the inconsistency that still remains, but I appreciate your sharp eye.
Council Rice, is there any issues with that approach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this, could I ask Ms. Olson a question?
Yes, please.
Is this lease time-sensitive? Could it just wait for another cycle and then brought back to this committee? Or does it have to be acted on by the end of the month? Or does it have to be acted on by the end of the month?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Council Rice. The lease has expired.
Oh, I see. When did it expire?
It expired at the end of 2021, and I did not realize that. So it was an extension, and it has now expired. Upon notification from our real property manager, I put together this resolution, working with Ann Walther and with the tenant.
Okay, yeah, Madam Chair, excuse me, yeah, if the board wants to advance it, I'll personally look at this and get an action ready for you to recommend or an amendment prepared if one needs to be done for the board meeting. We should have a lease in place just in case something happens, so I wouldn't recommend delaying.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Rice, and thank you, Director Olson. Does any of the other committee members have any questions in regards to this matter? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. We will now take a vote on Resolution 2022-188. All those in favor of approving this three-year lease agreement, please say aye. Aye. That passes. May I have someone please bring forth 2022-189?
Sure, I'll do this one. I am moving Resolution 2022-189. Resolution approving three one-year license agreements with Lime, Spin, and Lyft respectively for authorization to place equipment on NPRB property and permission to operate shared bike and scooter programs throughout the Minneapolis park system.
Great, thank you. Does anyone, oh, thank you, Chair, Co-Chair Thompson.
Yes, there's an amendment to this, can I read the amendment?
Yes, please.
Resolution to amend 2022-189 would like to add, whereas NPRB trails have a speed limit of 10 miles an hour, whereas the proximity of pedestrian bike trails can be close or even share a trail and create pedestrian safety concerns with lower-power vehicles. And whereas our parks feature includes a denser city and an older population, per the Parks for All Plan, resolved NPRB staff will implement a pilot speed limit program with SBSP using geofencing capabilities in a minimum of two locations as part of the 2022 NPRB scooter operation plan when agreements with SBSP and the NPRB are effective on parkland this season. And resolved, two reduced speed zones for scooters will be implemented for the 2022 season in collaboration with partnering jurisdictions. The two target areas are along West River Parkway and Central Riverfront Regional Park, between Third Avenue South and 13th Avenue South, and on Victory Memorial Parkway. NPRB staff have flexibility to adjust the length of these target areas or add additional test areas prior to the 2023 license renewal. These pilots will be assessed by NPRB staff for potential expansion.
Thank you, Co-Chair Thompson. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Olson, is this for Director Olson, I mean, tractor, yeah, Olson.
Well, I guess first, if whoever authored the amendment would like to speak to it.
Sure, yes, I will speak to it.
Oh, did you want to?
Did you have a question?
First shot at it, well, yeah, I just had some comments on it, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, yeah, no, this is, yeah, I think this is interesting. And, yeah, certainly an interesting pilot of being able to control these speeds because, you know, it is something that, you know, goes on right now, and it's not just scooters, right? If you can't really, if you're going down one of our paths, it's difficult to ride casually alongside someone. You know, you'll be on your lefted quite a bit, and, you know, so I think the ultimate, you know, solution for, you know, any, this kind of problem in general is creating more space, which is, you know, what I'm pushing for all the time. And, yeah, I think this is really interesting, you know, I would really love to see these sort of speed measures, speed limit measures implemented in, you know, future vehicles. You know, there's really no reason that people need to be going over the speed limit with, with any vehicle. So that'd be kind of cool if we could show the efficacy of this, so, yeah, good ad, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Co-Chair Thompson.
I would just like to offer my support for this amendment. We discussed it at length, and Co-Chair Schaefer wrote it up, but it is definitely something that I think should be at least piloted so we can get some other information and see what's possible, so I support it.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Alper.
Thank you, I'm not on this committee, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So I saw the amendment come through, and I wondered how many, like, incidents of crashes we had due to scooters and, as opposed to, due to cars? And I, I'm sure that, I know that Chief O'Hara has left, but I'm sure he'd be willing to share that with us all. But I just want to say, I plan to support the amendment and the resolution and the full board, but I just want to say, there have been, there have been no reports of scooter crashes in parks. I believe I'm reading that, that right. So I just, I just, I, I support it because I think speeding is a big issue overall. And I hope that we would take the same sort of sentiment and apply it to all spheres, is all I'm saying. Thank you.
Director Olson, did you have any further comment on that?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Commissioners, Commissioner Alper. Not specifically, however, I work closely with our park police department and the city of Minneapolis, who keeps a compliance dashboard. They filter all complaints and reports through Minneapolis 311 and through a reporting kind of application and dashboard. And anything serious that has happened, I have not had a report of. So to Commissioner Alper's point, I have not been given information that there have been crashes. I understand that there are certainly concerns. And I work closely and keep an eye on what's happening as far as reported incidents and how they impact us in the parks, for what it's worth.
Thank you, and I'll just add one other comment. I believe, and you can confirm this, Director Olson, the 311 app was shut down, was it in July of 2021? So there was at a point where, for the end of the season, people were unable to report scooters in the parkland, scooters on the trails, because of some legal issues, I believe?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Commissioners, 311 app wasn't shut down. The functionality for scooters specifically was temporarily shut off due to misuse of the reporting feature. It broke the terms of agreement for use due to negative and harassing comments, I think, that were coming through. That was my understanding. However, we have data from all of the years of this, of the time that the scooters have been within our jurisdiction. So we can lean on that data. We also have some functions in place for compliance and reporting for this year that are even better. I have, I can show you, if you'd like.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
If you'd like. While I'm doing that, though, while I'm pulling this up, feel free to keep.
Yes, Commissioner Menns, did you have another question or comment?
And maybe, I missed this in the documents, but, I mean, how is it going to be enforced? And is there going to be a ticket? If, or are they just not going to be equipped to go over 10 miles an hour?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Commissioner Menns. When there is a speed zone that's implemented using geofence technology, it powers down the scooter so the scooter can't go beyond that speed. There are speed zones that are within the city already. An example of that, there is a speed zone on the Stone Arch Bridge of 10 miles per hour. So as a scooter approaches and is on the Stone Arch Bridge, it's powered down to 10 miles per hour. And then as it exits that area, within about a 30-feet wash zone, it is able to speed up again. There are technical limitations to that, though. I mentioned that 30-foot kind of wash zone, right? Well, the great thing about the Stone Arch Bridge is that it runs over water. So all of that area, it doesn't matter if there's any kind of slush on that geofence because you're stuck on that bridge, and it's not impacting anything else beyond that. But once you get onto, say, a path that's adjacent to a parkway, and scooters are allowed on the parkway or on a city street, maybe if you're, if you're cruising down Chicago Avenue on your scooter in the, in the bike lane or in the street, I don't know which, and you go by a park, we have three parks that are on Chicago Avenue. And if, say, we had a geofence on that park, that would power that scooter down to 10 miles per hour in running traffic. So we have to be careful of those zones and that kind of slush factor of that maybe 30 feet. The other place where it gets a little touchy with those geofence zones is in areas like downtown where there are tall buildings, and there aren't places for those pings to make it down. Because this is all using like satellite technology. And another area to think about are bridges or overpasses, things that go over each other or as we intersect with roads. So I'm going to learn a lot more about this as we move through the season. That's why I appreciate the opportunity and guidance to work with these vendors on pilot areas that may be small to start, and as we start to grow, we can determine whether or not it's possible or to power up and power down in particular areas, and if it remains safe for the user.
The follow-up question was, like, is there any, are we going to issue tickets if somebody's using the scooter irresponsibly or destructively? I mean, like, is that something that could be of risk to people who use the scooters to come in conflict with law enforcement?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Commissioner Menns, I can't speak to that, I would have to ask Chief O'Hara. To my knowledge, there have not been citations issued previously to scooter users. However, the, if there are complaints on a particular scooter, and we're able to pinpoint that scooter or that device, whether it be by that ID of the, of the device, location, if things are left, we can trace back, the vendors can trace back to the user, and then the vendors can shut down their access, things of that nature. We had that happen last year, where there was damage done to one of our park properties, and the scooter was ditched. Well, that was easy, that was like, you know, you don't even have to choose your own adventure. You just dial up that number and you know exactly who ditched it there. So the vendors are on top of that as well, and so it's kind of an effort between the two, between the jurisdictions and the vendors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, any other questions or comments? I'll just close out with saying top scooter speed is 15 miles per hour. So the differential, this is something Director Olson, we've dialogued a little bit about, is it's not going to be probably huge, you know, it might be 12. It probably won't go down to 10 if it's near a parkway. But that's something that, you know, it's a different story with e-bikes, and that may be something that we have to eventually deal with as a board. Right now, this is where we're starting, and I think it's a good start. I think it's a fair start for the companies, for the city. And I just want to give a public thank you to Deputy Ringgold, Deputy Superintendent Ringgold and Director Olson. I attended a meeting on this like in December with the downtown community, and they've been on this for months. And so this whole dialogue that you guys have initiated and worked through, you may not know it, but last year, our parks were not geofenced at all in the city. They were in St. Paul, but not in Minneapolis. And so between this early dialogue, the city got the park geofences in, which means that you can't end a scooter ride in our park between the hours that our parks are closed, between midnight and 6:00. And that's, that's really huge for the community, and so I want to just say thank you to that. And we were going to put the Stone Arch Bridge, and the city did it. So, I mean, I just really want to say a public thank you to Director Olson for all your hard work in getting into all these details. And Secretary Ringgold, it really means a lot to the community and to me personally. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Co-Chair Schaefer, I'd like to make a point of clarification.
Sure.
I have learned that there are scooters that can go 20 miles per hour. So that, but that's consistent with our parkway speed limit. So this will be an opportunity for me to learn more about that and to continue to experiment with those geofences. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
But this is in great partnership with the city of Minneapolis and their staff, and with the University of Minnesota and their staff. We have a really strong cohort of micromobility jurisdiction representatives who are working together on this to make it a seamless experience for users and to make things easy on the jurisdictions, so we're all kind of working off the same playbook.
Great, thank you, Director Olson.
You're welcome.
So let's take first a vote on the amendment, I believe is how we do this. So all those in favor of the amendment that been proposed by Co-Chair Thompson on Resolution 2022-189, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against it? No. So now we'll take a vote on passing the Resolution 2022-189. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes, amendment and resolution. May I have a committee member please bring forth our last action?
I would like to move Resolution 2022-193. Resolution approving 2023-2026 strategic directions and performance goals and adopting priority strategies from Parks for All, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board Comprehensive Plan, 2021 to 2020 to 2036 for the same four-year time period.
Any questions or comments on this resolution? We've given a lot of prior questions and comments to these. So we've done a lot of work on this, and I'm really excited that we are bringing this forward. And thank you again to all the staff for your hard work on this. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2022-193, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I will declare the Admin and Finance, that passes, I declare the Admin and Finance Committee adjourned.